Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the council meeting on Wednesday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We began this meeting at four P M. Went in camera to discuss some closed-meeting items, and we came out of camera, took a pause, and now we have the public joining us again. So thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to start off with the traditional land acknowledgement that the town of Midland recognizes is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Nishnabik people, now known as the Chipewa Tri-council comprised of Bozle First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-Confederation Treaty Five and Treaty Sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Town of Midland also recognizes located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendak, the historic homeland of the Meti, that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I'd also like to deliver the following safety message for folks that are joining us in chambers this evening. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance, the double glass doors there, and make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit right here beside, behind Counselor East. And up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening it, and if it's safe, exit onto the second floor. Turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. The washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area, and an elevator is located just out the main entrance way. Also, Midland has a respectful workplace policy. Anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Our meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted to the town's YouTube website. Meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three. I'd also like you to join in a moment of silent reflection, please, and then we'll continue on to the meeting. Thank you very much. So item seven on our agenda is the Declaration of Conflict of Interest section. Does any member of council have any declaration of conflict of interest relating to tonight's agenda? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I will be declaring conflict of interest under all reports under section ten point four, specifically ten point four point five, municipal goal, municipal alcohol policy. The reason for my declaring is my wife works for Askenonia, and she actually rents space for events that involves the alcohol policy. So I will declare conflict on that item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And since that occurs during the section on, normally you'd be chairing, just pass the chair over to me when you're ready, and I'll assume things for that one specific item, and then return the chair to you. Counselor Meredith, and then Counselor Downer. Counselor Meredith, you're on mute. Never gets old.
Oh, goodness. Sorry, that might happen quite frequently tonight. But I am declaring a conflict interest on the parking in section Options and Alternatives. Number one, special levy for downtown property owners. Do you need the actual CSR number on that, or is that sufficient?
That'll be sufficient, and honestly, because that's just one of the many options on that report, let's just wait and see whether we get to that option. And then if we do end up having that option on the table to discuss, you can always do an ad hoc declaration and pull out of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So not a worries. Counselor Downer.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I too have a con- conflict regarding Askenonia Senior Center, as I'm a life member. So I will be declaring a conflict when that arises. And also, under parking, I am the recipient of a valid handicap parking permit, so I will not be discussing any other parking issues.
Very good. It's noted. And just for the public walking, watching along, counselors are left to their own devices to determine whether or not they feel they have a conflict of interest. Of course, they can seek advice from the Integrity Commissioner if unsure. Otherwise, they can make this conclusion on their own and opt out for whatever reason they choose to declare. All right, so we had an in-camera session, and we have a couple of motions that arise out of that. So I'm going to move through those right now. And this is moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Post. The council receives as information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal update and confidential presentation provided by the Legal and Risk Advisor at the closed-meeting session of council held today, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with respect to stormwater damage litigation. We've had our discussion in camera, council. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, we have a motion moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Reese. The council receives as information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report and update provided by the Chief Administrative Officer at the closed-meeting session of council held today, September twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, with respect to our organizational update. Again, our conversation all happened in camera, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And lastly, move by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cotton. The council receives as information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report and update provided by the Chief Administrative Officer at this closed-meeting session of council held September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with respect to the CIO goals and objectives. Again, we've had our conversation in camera. Just affirming direction, council. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. All right, next, approval of the agenda. This is moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Bold, that the contents of the regular council with closed-session agenda for September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three be approved as amended. And those amendments are amendment to item ten point four point eight CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-seven financial report as at July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, by adding the following to recommendation number one in the staff report. And that verbiage is, and that a budget of fifty thousand dollars for library equipment purchases be approved, funded from the library equipment automation reserve. So those words have been added to that report, and will be subject to discussion later tonight, because that report has been pulled. Also, the removal of item fifteen point one, deputations and petitions, Midland Cultural Center, update of operations at the request of the deputant we look for during from the MCC at a future date. With those modifications to our agenda, council, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. So we have now our consent agenda. For those of you watching along or following along, there are many reports on the consent agenda. Quite a few of them being pulled, so I'm going to read the list as through a motion here. Move by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Bold, that the items and related recommendations contained within this September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three consent agenda as consent items, having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of, so this means there's two that are effectively getting adopted here right now. The rest are pulled. So the exception of item ten point four point one CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-nine parking updating considerations, item ten point four point two CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy, notice, signs, procedures, and protocols update, item ten point four point three CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-one transient shopper dock fees, item ten point four four CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-three volunteer policy, item ten point four point five CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-four municipal alcohol policy, item ten point four point six CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-five special event policy, item ten point four point seven CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four budget outlook, and item ten point four point eight CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-seven financial report as as at July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, which have been considered under section, which will be considered under section seventeen, Reports and Other Items Withdrawn From the Consent Agenda for Council's Consideration, which include presentation by consultants regarding a report under consideration. That being said, all those in favor of that amendment? Any opposed? And that is carried. So we'll have some good discussion on those reports. And now, move by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Ball, the council resolve into the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor? That is carried. And Counselor Meredith, your virtual hand is still up. Just let you know. Or did you have a question or comment?
I did have a question on the consent portion. I'm not sure which order this falls in. But I wanted to, I had some concerns regarding four point two and twenty-five point one under non-union staff relations from our last agenda in closed, closed camera, closed meeting. So I wanted briefly put in a motion to reconsider. It's the first time I've done this, so I just need some help on the process.
Okay, so at this point, the agenda itself is approved. However, the motion to reconsider, we can just, oh, Madam Clerk, perhaps you can help us procedurally on this, because he's a three, two-thirds vote to reconsider?
Thank you, your worship. I believe when you read the motion for the consent agenda, you didn't ask if there was any comments about the two items that were left on consent? And that's where Counselor Meredith wanted to make a comment about the minutes that were under consent?
That's right. I didn't. We just kind of moved through procedurally. Okay, so we've passed this now. Called the question on it, but to be fair to Counselor Meredith, because we we knew or suspected there would be a motion to reconsider coming. How would you suggest we proceed so that we can, should we address this now, but before we get into? Maybe the whole, do we do committee the whole? How would you like to do it?
Thank you, your worship. I believe the best way to proceed would be, Counselor Meredith has notified us that he would like to present a motion to reconsider. So when we get to that section of notices of motion, at that time, he can present the motion to reconsider. However, if he wants it dealt with in a quicker manner, then we would also require a motion to waive the procedure bylaw so that we can actually, you can actually discuss the motion at tonight's meeting. So we can, you can wait till the notice of motion section, then we can deal with it at that time.
Perfect. Okay, fair enough. So again, normally when people read in a notice of motion, there's no debate around it. We got to wait for three weeks to the next meeting. However, we do have the ability with two-thirds consensus to set aside the procedural policy for an exception and debate that tonight. Because it's a motion to reconsider, we would also need a two-thirds consent, assuming we were granted that.
Thank you, your worship. We do, you would need a majority vote for the reconsideration. And then two-thirds to waive the procedure. So we first have to waive the procedure, because we're not giving the appropriate notice for a motion. And if council approves that motion, then we can consider, you can consider the motion to reconsider, which would require a majority of council.
I think I got it, but you may have to help us again when we get to that. So Counselor Meredith, we have a motion drafted here that's ready to go for you, and we'll make sure that gets injected into the notice of motion section. And with counsel's will, we can deal with that tonight, only because there's timing, timing conditions on this that would make sense that we would debate it tonight if council's willing to do that.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I meant to, I was pre-briefed on that, too, and it just, I slipped into autopilot. So I believe we are now in committee of the whole, which I'll turn over to Deputy Mayor, and he's got the lion's share of the meeting. So hopefully, your voice is well-rested.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening to council staff and guests in the audience coming this evening. We have a full plate on the agenda this evening, and we're going to begin with item number twelve, this public meeting hearing. There is none this evening. There are no presentations. And number thirteen, so we're going to move forward. To number fourteen, there is no integrity commissioner recommendation report. However, we do have a deputation this evening, and we have Mr. Roy Mulders, who will address council and community. It's under nuisance lighting on residential properties. Mr. Roy Mulders to present to council. Mr. Mulders, if we can approach the mic. Sir, you have ten minutes to present, and this is treated as Information Council. If there's any questions or comments after, for Mr. Mulder, do ask. And so, Mr. Mulder, you have the floor.
Roughly two years ago, a neighbor of mine had installed some security lighting. And unfortunately, he installed them high on his house and very bright and they, the new lights that they have now, they carry very far. And there's much more glare to them now. I believe it's the LED lighting that is responsible for that. I was subjected to motion sensor, very sensitive, having lights come on twenty-five, thirty-five times at night. I think it's not a healthy situation for anybody to be in. I could buy blackout curtains if I wanted to, but I shouldn't have to as a property owner. Plus the fact that I rely on night vision to view my property. And you can do that very well once your eyes are adjusted to it. But if you're subjected to a light being turned on and off twenty-five, thirty times, thirty-five times a night, it's difficult to actually see your backyard. So I would like to see the property standards bylaw revised to include nuisance lighting. And definitions in the property standards bylaw, nuisance means an injurious, offensive, or objectionable condition. And this is part of the sentence that I believe is from a different era. And without limiting the generality of the foregoing shall include. It's hard to get your head around that. It's old language. Why don't they just say including but not limited to? That's the kind of new language that we have today. And it's easier to understand. And it goes on to say offensive or obnoxious by reason of the emission of gas, fumes, dust, sawdust, or objectionable odor, or by reason of the unsightly storage of goods, wares, merchandise, rubbish, salvage, refuse matter, waste, or other material. We've got our noses covered. We've got our ears covered. Why don't we have our eyes protected? The thing about the property standards bylaw is they do have lighting covered. But it's only for non-residential establishments. I live in a residential area, and that's where the problem is. There are a lot of other municipalities, not just in Ontario, but across the world that are having this issue. And they're dealing with it. The latest community here in Ontario would be, would be Aurelia just last year. There are many municipalities in Ontario that have done a good job of dealing with this issue. One of them being the city of Brampton. They actually have a staff report explaining everything about dealing with the lighting situation. Includes details of enforcement process. And they talk about actual levels of brightness and light intrusion. And so on. And they list a number of other municipalities, the city of Mississauga, city of Vaughan, they've done a great job of writing down what needs to be done. But I, I really hope that the town of Midland does move on this, because I know I'm not the only one that's having to deal with it. Right, Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulders, for your presentation. I'm going to open this up to council to see if there are any questions or comments on your presentation. Yes, Counsel Reese.
Through you, Jack. Just a couple of questions, maybe. Have you ever thought of maybe just approaching your neighbor in a play conversation and explaining to him what happens? Because I think a lot of times what happens with residents, they go straight to bylaw or O P P. When you might be able to have a positive conversation with him and just explain to him how it affects your life.
That was the first thing I did, sir. And I got a negative response. I'll leave it at that.
Paul, what, Mr. Reese?
Thank you, and with all due respect, I can, I can understand your feelings. The one thing that I might point out is that criminals love playing in the dark. And the best way to deter criminal activity is unfortunately lighting, because we all know that criminals love the dark. So
I actually sent out a C I P a while ago back in March, and it had links to various websites. And a lot of the data that I was gathering, and it's included in that C I P, showed that they are, thieves are not afraid of the light. They actually prefer to have lots of light so they can get their job done quicker, because they can see what they're doing.
Thank you, sir. I have Counselor Meredith.
Thank you. I can definitely relate to Mr. Mulders on this, on this subject. I was actually one of the, I was on the opposite end of it. I was the actual neighbor that was, you know, his, my light was shining into somebody else's neighbor's property. In my property, I had an LED light shining my backyard. And my neighbor was about, probably his backyard to mine, or his house to mine was about four hundred feet. And he made me, he called me, made me aware, you know, your light is kind of shining in our, in our dining room area of our, of our house. Do you mind shutting it off? And my light just came on automatically at night in the back, and I had no idea. So I politely shut it, you know, turns it off, and everything was fine. There was no need for it to be on. But at the end of the day, we do have strict, I believe, in our bylaws for our commercial properties, they do have to have a certain type of lighting that is not nuisance, especially in our downtown core, I believe. There's something like that in place, because I believe, you know, our our good friend and Jamie, Jamie Tripp from his new test batch, his brewery, he had to some significant challenges to, and delays from this lighting proposal. But I, I think this is worth something to look at. I mean, if you're, if you're going to ask your neighbor, and he's not going to oblige, because his, his light is shining, you know, into someone else's home and causing some nuisance, then, you know, there's going to be fighting involved. And the last thing you want to do is have your enemy as a neighbor. It could be very stressful and and at the end of the day, lighting could be, there's could be certain lighting to deter thieves. You know, to Counselor Sheldon's concern with not having any lights on. And I agree with that, too, but there are, you could have strict guidelines so your light is not affecting the livelihood of others. Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Yes, your worship.
Thanks for coming and talking to us. We had a little sidebar before the meeting started, you know, and I've, I have the same thing I'm attracted to when a light comes on. I just automatically look at it like a moth or something, part moth. But I have a neighbor across the road from me who I have never talked to about this, and I couldn't easily. I mean, I know, I know her well. But I can understand how to some people this could drive you to distraction. You know, when their security light comes on for the driveway, which is well-needed, it shines right in my front window. So I'm watching TV. I usually tend to put the blind down, just so I'm not, you know, squirrel all the time the light goes on, because I can't help but look. You know, things like that could be mitigated with a little bit of tin or like a hood or something that would just really deflect the bright LED light down to where it was intended to be and not across. Yeah, I think if it really bothered me, I'd probably go over there and even offer to, to put that on for. So I can understand with me, I'm experiencing it, but it's not really bothering me, but I know that's not the case for everyone else. And clearly, you know, in your, in your world, and it really is bothering you. So I'm just wondering from our bylaw perspective, Mr. Smiley's in tennis with tonight. Is there anything in our bylaw as it is now, even if it's relatively vague and, you know, subjective, like most of our bylaws are? Is there anything that we could use to, to speak to somebody and deal with nuisance lighting? Or would we, would we really need to add some prescriptive language around nuisance lighting for residential, just as we've done for commercial, to be effective? Just wondering if our existing tools are good enough, or do we, is it worthy of something to revisit if council was moved to do so?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. What Mr. Mulder said was correct. We do have a lighting section in our property standards bylaw, but it, it, like, like Mr. Mulder said, it's all non-residential establishments, is what it says. And then at the bottom of that section, lighting shall not be positioned so as to cause any impairment of use or enjoyment of neighboring properties. But it's only for non-residential commercial property. So there would need to be a change made if we wanted to, you know, enforce this for in residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, so just suggesting was just made that, you know, if we just removed that language that restricted that section to commercial or non-residential, and just left it wide open, that could, that could solve the problem, but we'd have to obviously have some public consultation around making a change like that, get some input, and also get some info from you and your staff about how enforceable is this? Because a lot of these complaints, you won't be able to find them committing probably unless it's, you know, the, one of the seasons where it's real dark early in the day, because you guys aren't working the overnight shift. So we'd have to come up with a mechanism of can somebody who's experiencing this problem take pictures or video of it? And is that enough for you then to commence an investigation based on that, based on that digital evidence? So this is a conversation I'd be totally willing to have as we revisit our bylaws and modernize some of them. I don't know that's enough to make a quick knee-jerk reaction and rip the bylaw open tonight or next week. But one of the, I think you'll see later in the meeting, one of our agenda items is to pull bylaws that are in need of review, either because council thinks that way or our staff do. And itemize and prioritize the review of those bylaws and modernize them a bit to meet our needs. And just as we experienced with the bird feeding, one that'll probably end up finding its way into a bylaw revision. This nuisance lighting, I think our manager of bylaws will probably take note of this, and we could find suggested amendment to open that up so that it impacts the whole community rather than just businesses when the time comes. So it's not really a question, which is, this is supposed to be questions. But I do, I do want to thank you for coming and bringing us to our attention and, you know, putting it on to the the many long list of things that we'd like to try and tighten up with our bylaws to make everybody's life better in Midland.
Thank you, your worship. I do have a staff member from the planning department that will speak on the matter.
The hell if it was on. Through you, Deputy Mayor, the, his worship did mention, we are looking at all the bylaws to see which ones need to be updated and prioritize them. We also have lighting guidelines that we use for Planning Act applications when reviewing site plan applications. And in particular, we have what's called dark sky compliance. And what that essentially means is that we want the lights to be shining down, not up. So as we go through our property standards bylaw, and if we do determine that we do need to add something in for, to protect residential, we'll also review this lighting guideline, so that if that needs to be updated as well, we can then provide additional updates to, to this guideline as well, so that staff have that resource when we're reviewing the Planning Act application, site plans for residential against residential or commercial against residential. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Seeing there are no further questions, I'd like to thank Mr. Roy Mulders for bringing this to attention for the community. And hopefully, we can find some solutions in the future regarding this matter. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to item sixteen. The Committee Local Board Delegation or Memo. There is none this evening on the agenda. So we're going to move on. We're going to move to number seventeen. Reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration, which includes presentations by consultants regarding our report. For council's consideration, which includes presentations by consultants regarding our report under consideration. Before we get to the reports, we do have. Under seventeen point one. C S R dash twenty twenty three dash seventy two entrance appeal. Ten twenty seven Glen Bogie Drive. We do have Mister Mike Peach and Mister Brian McCall. One of the gentlemen will speak. We have ten minutes to speak and there will be. Questions or comments to be asked by council. And you have a motion which I'll read after the presentation and discussion. Mister McCall, you have the floor.
Talk, there we go. Got to get the buttons racing. Thank you very much, Mister Deputy Mayor, your worship, members of council and staff. My name is Brian McCall. I'm here representing Mike Peach tonight, who is a landowner at ten twenty seven Glen Bogie Crescent. The issue we have is trying to obtain a curb cut permission for his property, which not only fronts on Glen Bogie, but also fronts on to. Penitangishing Road. Your staff has written you a report which you've received. You have tonight. We met this summer with Mister Ferguson and Mister Sobel. They explained their position. We understand it. We respect it, but nevertheless, we're here to try and. Get council's consideration to have this curb cut. Historically, in the in October of twenty twenty, Mister Peach applied for a single car garage building permit. His property is as such that he cannot build it next to his house. There's quite a grade differentiation. From his driveway down to his backyard. It's well over a meter. And it would entail all kinds of retaining walls in order to create a driveway to get into the backyard. So he suggested he would front it on to Penitangishing Road. He was told at the time that he'd have to apply for a curb cut. And he was also told at the time that the staff position was that it wouldn't be granted. Nevertheless, he was given a building permit. And the garage was completed in December of twenty twenty. We then applied for a curb cut and we found out that the. Zoning by law restricts all residential properties to one access only. And he already has one on Glen Bogie Crescent for his house and carport, so therefore this would have been second. We applied to the committee of adjustment in twenty twenty one for relief from the bylaw and it was granted. Subject to four conditions, which I think are fairly standard conditions through the committee of adjustment. We then said, all right, we'll try again and we submitted a letter. As things did happen, the with pandemic and other excuses. We really didn't get around to doing something until this spring when he reapplied for his curb cut and was told he couldn't have one. Thus, our audience with your staff got their position and here we are tonight. By way of support for his application. We note that there are a a number of existing accesses onto the Penitangishing Road. There's nine semi detached homes across from Monsignor Castics, which has two. Of course, there's the Honoria General Hospital has one. The newly developed access for Canadian Tire, which is used extensively not over only by customers, but. Trans transports supplying the store. And more recently, there was another curb cut to a property further south on Penitangishing Road, which I believe was. Subject to council discussion, perhaps earlier this year or late last year. We've also noted there's a number of man gates from fences along there onto the Penitangishing Road. There is a sidewalk. It's on the far side of the of the roadway and facilitates kids walking to and from Monsignor Castings. We also note that the there isn't, there shouldn't be an issue with sight lines from his garage to any of the intersections of Howard Street. Or Victoria, well in excess of three hundred and fifty feet from Victoria Street. The grade is fairly level there and you can have a great sight line, so there shouldn't be a cause for accident. Mister Peach's garage will be used primarily a half a dozen times a year. He is an old car aficionado. He will keep keeping his vehicle in there for the winter. Having out into his carport in the summertime, so there could be a half a dozen traffic movements on and off the property. That's fine. And I should know that. Having said all of that. We throw ourselves at council's mercy. We ask for council to give consideration to amending the curb cut by law. So that Mister Peach can have a access on to his highway, on to Penitangishing Road.
Thank you, Mister McCall. Is that is that complete your presentation?
I could go on for hours.
Well, thank you very much. I do will actually open this up to to council. To for particular questions regarding this particular matter I have. Your worship.
Thank you very much, Mister McCall. It's nice to hear your voice again, standing in front of council. For those of you don't know, you know, Mister McCall was in charge of our planning department for many, many years, and I I think even might even know our current. Manager, acting director of planning. At any rate, you're right, we did approve. The other curb cut. I think it was just a couple of meetings ago, might even mean the last meeting was it's freshly in my mind anyway. And the irony on this one is I think both of those curb cuts came to the same committee of adjustment, whereas the one we overturned and approved last meeting or wherever it was recently. Wasn't approved by the committee of adjustment and yours, your friends or your clients or however you want to word it was so. I I was a head scratcher for me too, so I talked to staff about this and I think one of the constraints is. Is that our current bylaw doesn't, I mean, we made so many, you know, exceptions to it that. Virtually everybody on Old Pantang Road has a back entrance. The byline needs to be updated by all accounts to make. You know, make these exceptions more, you know, so they become the rule rather than the exception. And that's something that I think staff has looked at and in talking with Mister Sobel. There's a number of changes he'd like to make to this curb cut by a lot of modernize it and to make life easier. However, that hasn't been done yet, because we haven't directed it and he's got a full plate. But we can all acknowledge that it needs to get done. So he doesn't have any really any choice except to recommend. That it be denied because that's what our policy says right now. So fair enough, there's this appeal mechanism. So just so we understand how we get here. Staff doesn't really have a choice. They can't pick and choose, you know, the worthiness of an application. We have a policy that. You know, I believe could be updated to be more less restrictive. But that's a conversation for another day. So I appreciate your deputation on this. I supported the last appeal because, you know, out of equity and fairness. So many people on this road already have it. Without a really, really good reason to to say no to your your client, your friend, I would. Be equally inclined to approve this, which means when this motion hits the floor here. That I'll be voting against the staff recommendation, which will in effect allow your your client to have his curb cut. And then with the the commitment that we will address the curb cut by law in our municipality, try and modernize it. And I joke only call it Mitchifying it because I know. Which Mister Sobel has some changes he'd like to make to it that make a lot more sense around today's planning world. And I look forward to those modifications when they come, but for now they don't exist. Therefore, we need to do these kind of overrides on a case by case basis. So thank you for coming and presenting your evidence and. You know, for what it's worth, you've successfully convinced me and I'll leave it to my peers now.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Meredith, Counselor Ball and Counselor McDonald. I'll ask Counselor Meredith first to speak, Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Cotton through you to. I have just a question. Is there a difference in the properties from Mister Peach's property? To the one we just approved, like Mister or Mayor Gordon said, maybe, you know, three weeks, four weeks ago.
I'll answer our staff to answer that. Go ahead, sir.
Through you Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith. The the main primary difference is the previous application was for a secondary suite. Whereas this property is for a detached garage. And the there's also the previous application had room on site to park a vehicle on private property and this one currently doesn't as proposed. The only parking space outside of the building would be in the boulevard space. Those are the two main differences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Meredith.
Yeah, just a follow up there on on that. There is no parking space, so he would be, would he be subjected, Mister Peach subjected to just. Park his vehicle in his garage permanently and just have a kind of a right of way into his garage? Is that? Possible or? If he had his car parked in kind of the boulevard. Is that going to cause some problems?
All our staff members respond.
Through you Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith. That's that's always a concern with vehicles parked in the boulevard and it's a it's a it's a problem throughout town, to be honest with you. If we were to do something else more more permanent on the property by way of something registered on title. Future. Future buyers may or may not be aware of that and and it could be a challenge, but yeah, the only place currently to park is in in the garage, otherwise are parking on the. Boulevard, if that answers your question.
Uh, yes, it does. Now, just a follow up to that as well. Would there, if if we were to agree that to to have that curb cut could? And we we felt that it would be a liability. To be parked on the boulevard, could we come up with some agreement that he needed the car is not allowed to be parked on that boulevard? I know Mister Peach is, you know, at some time in his lifetime, that that house would probably be sold. So. You know, he's only using that access as Mister McCall says for, you know, six times a year. But we certainly don't want to be in a pickle down the down the road. If the house sells and all of a sudden there's, you know. You know, two cars in that in that in that boulevard area. So I'm not sure if there's could be some type of literature. Made up with this property.
Yes, our staff member.
Through Deputy America, Counselor Meredith. In the town today, we've only given. Agreements to park in the boulevard where there is no primary parking spot at all on a property. Because we needed to ensure that we have our liability. Covered when that car is parked in in the boulevard. In this instance, having a. An agreement to park on on or to. Ensure parking isn't on the boulevard. Council can always do it, but that's, you know, we don't have. That sort of agreement anywhere else in town. And again, this this owner certainly might might respect it. It's always. Some of these exceptions become problematic for the next owner of the house or the owner of the house after that. But again, council can waive the bylaw and recommend this entrance permit if if you so choose.
Thank you. I have Counselor Ball.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we currently are looking at actually allowing you to enter and. Enter your property through a secondary entrance. That doesn't mean that parking would be able to happen anyways, like there's no parking allowed on the boulevard right now. So allowing this entrance is not going to allow boulevard parking, correct?
Or through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Ball. That's why the planning rules are for a parking space to be on private property. So this is really saying we're approving. A driveway that has no option other than to park on the boulevard. So that's the the exception here, and that's why that previous. Variance that council approved. They had a spot beside the garage where they could park a car in the garage and beside the garage. So that there was no regular need to park on the boulevard. So that's the difference between these these two applications.
Thank you, but he does have an ability to park in the driveway. He just wants to be able to access his garage via an entrance. I can sympathize with that. I my previous property, I couldn't even have a driveway on the street that my house is on because of this bylaw. I think it it does need to be updated. I think allowing an entrance onto your garage is. I'm the least that we can do as. As building owners to be able to access a property and be able to actually use the property that we we buy. So I can understand the, I guess, fear of parking on the boulevard and having that as a town liability, but. The rules are still that you can't park there, so and if it comes down to it, you still can't park there regardless. And also, I think maybe naming the town as a liability in. Having them on your insurance. I know that we had to, we personally had to do that previously for a grandfathered structure that was over town lines. That's something that maybe we can consider being able to have that for future home buyers as. If they happen to park on that boulevard that they have the liability clause on their property because of that.
The clarification, sorry about that. I have Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Most of my my questions were addressed by the two previous counselors. I did bike by, you might have. Seen somebody biking around the court and on Penitangishing Road studying it. And I was concerned with. Where the garage was. Right adjacent. There isn't a place to park a car, but except in the garage. Unless is it possible that the curb cut would be? To your whole property with and you would be able to park a car beside your garage? That's my question.
Yes, Mister McCall.
Thank you very much. It is conceivable that a car could be parked beside the garage. The curb cut. Could be in such a way in the asphalt pavement that would allow for a car to park beside the garage as well as in the garage. There's really no need for it because his house, as you know, on Glen Bogie Drive does have a carport. And he keeps his regular vehicle there, plus in the summertime, he keeps his other car there too, so. He has ample area to park in front of his house, which is probably more convenient for for using the vehicles and. Then having to walk back to the garage, so there are ways and means with respect to an encroachment agreement on the property, we would agree to that.
Thank you. Yes, please. Maybe the need would be just to satisfy the council and. Concern of of him parking on the boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions for Mister McCall? Seeing then thanks, Mister McCall for your presentation and having response to the questions by council, so. I do have a motion here. That I'll read. I do need a mover and a seconder, so I'll read the.
Thank you very much for your time, counsel.
I will read the motion. And then obtain a mover and a seconder. Yes, your worship. Sorry, I thought you had a question, but the mayor is going to move it. Just give me a second here. Do we have a seconder? I will read the motion. That staff report C S R twenty twenty three dash seventy two dated September. Twenty seven twenty twenty three regarding a request. For a second entrance to ten twenty seven Glen Bogie Drive be received. And that council applied to the entrance restrictions. As outlined in bylaw number ninety nine one seven six and denied the request for a second entrance. To ten twenty seven Glen Bogie Drive. Those the favorite please.
Deputy Mayor.
Some discussion on there.
For a discussion. Yeah, yes, Counselor Downer.
Just I'd like to call for recorded vote on this when the time comes, please.
The House Clerk is there. You got that for recorded vote? We have Counselor.
Have clarification on the motion, the last sentence, please. Are we denying it or?
I'll read the last.
Thank you.
Or a minute, the that council apply. The entrance restrictions. Or a minute. The, that council apply the entrance restrictions as outlined in bylaw number ninety-nine. Dash one, seven, six, and deny the request for a second entrance to ten twenty-seven Glen Bogie Drive. Have you got them?
So the motion is denying the request.
Yes.
Yes, that's what it reads.
We support the gentleman to have the second driveway. We will defeat this motion.
Ma- Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, you can have discussion about the motion, but if someone wanted to propose an amendment, if you wanted to. Um, waive the entrance restrictions as outlined in the bylaw and support the request. Then that amendment could be made, but you would need a mover and a seconder. The original motion is to deny it, but then you could have an amendment to allow it and waive the restrictions of the entrance bylaw.
Counsel McDonald, you have follow up then?
I'll move for the amendment that, uh, the clerk suggested, please.
So we will take a vote on, on this and.
Do I have a second there?
Just a clar- clarification, counsel. Uh, I do have a, a new motion here with an amendment. Um, but I do need, uh, a mover and a seconder for this coun- council. Yep, Counsel McDonald. Seconder, Counsel Post. The amendment is. Uh, okay, I'm going to read the whole motion. The staff report CSR. Dash twenty twenty-three and seventy-two dated September seventeen, twenty twenty-three regarding a request. For a second entrance to ten twenty-seven Glen Bogie Drive be received and. That council waived the entrance restrictions as outlined in bylaw number ninety-nine. One, seventy-six and approved the request for a second entrance to ten twenty-seven Glen Bogie Drive. You've heard the motion. Are there any questions? Okay, we have requests for a recorded vote on this.
Did you want the recorded vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
C- Counsel Don.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. You've heard the amend, amending motion. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Deputy Mayor Cotton.
Yes.
Counselor East.
Yes.
Counselor Emeritus.
Yes.
Counselor Post.
Yes.
Counselor Bald.
Yes.
Counselor Downer.
No.
Counselor Ball.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon.
Yes.
The motion is carried eight to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the, this session. So thank the people coming to present. Thank you, Mr. McCall. We will now move into session with, uh, items that were, um. Withdrawn from the consent agenda. And we have at least nine items that were pulled. So it's going to be a lengthy discussion on the items. So we're going to go through the, uh. Item number one. Uh, ten point four one, which is the CSR twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine parking update. And considerations. I do have Counselor Downer and Counsel Bill Emeritus who declared conflict. So they will not participate in the discussion or vote. So. I will read at this time the. Motion. I do need a mover and I do need a seconder, but I'll read the motion. That staff report CSR. Dash twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine parking update and co- and considerations dated September twenty-seven. Twenty-two, twenty twenty-three be received in that council approves option one to keep. The current program with enhancements and provide accessible parking with valid. Permit effective January first, twenty twenty-four. And that council approves option two to reduce administrative costs by removing. The option to pay for parking with coin and phase out seniors free parking at the harbor effective April thirtieth. Twenty twenty-four and that council approves option three to increase the parking rate. To three fifty per hour for on-street parking and five dollars per hour at the harbor effective. January first, twenty twenty-four. That is the motion. Uh, I need a, a mover and a seconder on this.
I would, I am, would like to propose that the motion regarding the staff report CSR twenty twenty-three. Dash sixty-nine parking update and consideration be deferred to allow further consultation with BIA. And surrounding businesses and then the matter be placed on a future council agenda item for. Considerers, future, future council meeting agenda for consideration. I so move, I do require a seconder and I realize that the only thing we can debate. Is the timeframe when this could come back.
You, okay. Do we have a second to that motion? Counselor East. Thank you.
Sorry.
We can only have two mics on. Uh, just a quick point of order. We don't have a mover and seconder for the original motion. And normally what amendment would it be form part of the discussion? So we do need a mover and seconder to get the original motion on the floor. We have one for the amendment, but we just, it could be the same two people. We just procedurally, we need that. And then Counselor Emeritus, um, when you were introducing, you said that he had a conflict because he declared it, um, just to be clear. And Counsel Emeritus, you can let me know, change your mind or if you want, but we were saying that the conflict would only come into play if we were discussing that option. About the levy and we haven't got anywhere near the, yet. So Counsel Emeritus's conflict hasn't technically triggered by his own admission. So I just wanted to record on that one.
Okay.
And then also we're not, this, the motion to defer, where the debate isn't restricted to when it comes back. The debate is to whether or not you want to, um, defer it at all tonight. That's, that's what the motion to defer debate is going to be about, not about the merits of the original report or necessarily the timing. It's about whether or not we take it off the table tonight and deal with it some point in the future. Just to be clear on that one. And failing that, I, I yield the mic back. We're good. That's just the procedural stuff. So we do need a mover and seconder for the original, uh, motion.
Right. And, and I read the motion for the first one. Do we have a mover on this one? Counsel Post. Any second here on first motion? Mayor Gordon. Okay. I'm sorry. Right. Now we're back to Counsel McDonald's motion. I'll read it one more time. That the motion regarding staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine parking update and considerations be deferred. To allow for further consultation with BIA and surrounding businesses. And that the matter be placed on a future council meeting agenda for considerations. So we will hold on this. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have discussion on this, your clerk?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Counsel McDonald, as she moved the, the motion. Can have the floor to explain why she would like it deferred and then council would vote on the deferral.
So Counsel McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, we've received correspondence after we received the report. We also received, as you know, many, many reports. I would like the chance to be able to digest the reports. There was a lot of questions posed by myself and Counselor Emeritus, I believe. We did receive the replies to all our questions at two o'clock this afternoon. I have not had a chance to. Review the replies and I just think we would be doing ourselves a great injustice. On passing judgment on what's best for parking in our downtown area. Without giving it, it more time and consideration and consultation. So I hope you support the motion to defer so we can do our homework properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. I guess, and I'm sorry, um, your worship.
Yeah, thanks. Just, Counsel, you're free to weigh in on this. Is the, the deferral is the new thing we're talking about, but only the deferral. Okay? So I'm disinclined to support a deferral tonight on this, uh, for a couple of reasons. And I'll just explain why. One, we've had the requisite notice. This is the way it works. You get a week's notice. It's up to each counselor to dedicate the time that we committed to and we got, ran for election to read the reports. Even when there's lots and come to, to work prepared. Uh, I'm not suggesting for a moment that we would be adopting. Um, necessarily the recommendations, recommendations in this report, but I would expect council to review the many options that are on the table. And digest the input that we've had from the BIA who, uh, were quick to respond to us, which was wonderful. As well as Mr. Campbell, who's also been a vocal proponent of free parking downtown for, well, for as long as I've known him. And I think there's an opportunity for council, if we do not defer this tonight, to narrow the list of options to things that we believe are palatable. And provide the direction to staff basically as a shortlist to come back to council with a new report. If we defer this tonight, nothing new comes back to us. Literally the same report comes back to us and all we're doing is delaying the pain by three weeks. So I, I am not in favor of this deferral simply because, you know, unfortunately didn't have a chance to review the, the information. All of that wonderful stuff that the staff answered your questions, which by the way, kudos to council for emailing those questions to. To staff and getting those answers. All of those answers need to form part of the public discussion tonight or whenever, you know, if this doesn't get deferred. The public needs to hear the questions and they need to hear the answer. This can't be something that, you know, we just do over email, contemplate on our own and then we vote. So none of that's going to happen tonight if we kick the can down the road. I would be more inclined to see us, uh, not defer. So basically vote down this deferral. Have this report, um, debated to, tonight. Let's eliminate the things that appear like a bridge too far. Get a shortlist for our, uh, our staff to come back to us with a fresh report with more meat on the bones. That will give the opportunity for the community to weigh in on the shortlist rather than the eight or twelve actual options that are contained in this report. And then we can have a fulsome debate and decide on a path forward. That would be my preference and that's the only reason why I don't support a deferral because I don't see the value in. In delaying this anymore when you've already heard from our BIA stakeholders, which are one of our main vocal voices that we have in our beautiful downtown that we want to continue to support. So that's why I'll, I'll be voting against this deferral because. This is our job is to do these things now and not kick them down the road. So that's just my, my personal opinion. I just wanted to share that.
Uh, thank you. I have Counsel Emeritus.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Cotton. I, uh, I agree with, uh, Counsel McDonald. Uh, the reports, uh. The majority of the questions were answered, but they weren't all, all, all answered. Um, I could, uh, specifically go, um, you know. Uh, through, I, I did ask a question about, uh, the, uh, meters prior to the, the big dig on the, uh. Profit and expense report on that. Um, I only got the, the actual revenue from the, um. Um, the re- um, the information for further revenue, but I didn't get an, uh, an expense report. So I don't know if we're in, in a positive or in a negative.
Sorry, this, this needs to be about, sorry to interject, this has to be about the deferral, whether or not we defer or not, not getting into the weeds of the report. That's if this is deferred, then we're not talking about this anymore. We want to the next. If it isn't deferred, then it's an opportunity for you to discuss these matters. Sorry.
So this is.
This, it's now or later, basically the question that's being posed right now.
Well, my questions weren't, weren't, weren't answered. So I wasn't satisfied. So, uh, deferral, uh, would be my vote.
Thank you, Counsel Emeritus. I will postpone that for later. So McDonald.
Just in retrospect, um. To Mayor. Gordon's comments, it, that does have some merit, but I did spend the time to study the report. It's not like I'm saying there wasn't enough time for the report. What I am saying is there wasn't the consultation. I'm just defending my request for the deferral. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question particularly to, to this motion? Counsel East.
Deputy Mayor Cotton, I, I still support Catherine's motion. Um, to me, the report is flawed and it's missing very much.
Thank you. Counsel Ball.
Thank you. Um, I'm honestly on the fence with this one. I think that. The parking has been such a conversation for so long. I can't imagine how annoying it is to keep. Giving your opinions as BIA or as business owners to continue to always be bringing this up and asking for a solution. So I would say that I would like to move forward because of that, but I do agree that. The questions were just given to us at two PM. I briefly read them before coming here, but. There wasn't a lot of time to digest all the information that was given to me at two PM today. So I agree with. Uh, my fellow counselors that I would like to be able to give this a really firm look at it and see everybody has the information. And everyone is prepared and what they want to bring forward to be able to support you properly. I don't think if every single person up here has the, has the ability to still have questions. I don't think that's helpful for you.
Thank you, Counsel Ball. I have Counsel, uh, your worship, Gordon.
Just a quick, um, clarity for Counselor East. If the report is flawed today. It's going to be the same flawed report in three weeks because nothing's going to change. It's literally going to be the same report that comes back in three weeks by deferring this. Because we can't give staff direction to change it or give us more information unless we debate it tonight and give that direction. So.
Just talk about the deferral. I'll call the vote, please.
Uh, thank you, Counsel McDonald. I do, I'm not quite sure. I do have Counselor Emeritus who had his hand up. Counsel Emeritus.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on, on the timing of we, we want to receive the, uh, report. I did receive, it did say at, uh, I believe one fifty-five, but I didn't actually get it. I didn't look, I, I didn't get my ping. I didn't have my phone on me. So it was three o'clock by the time I got it. I submitted the report, my questions. Uh, I think it was Saturday, uh, night around midnight here, uh, in, uh, in your Greece time, which would have been, uh. Uh, four o'clock, I believe, or five o'clock, uh, your time. So that was done on Saturday. So, and I didn't receive it till, uh, today. Or, or, or read it till, start reading it till three o'clock today, um, your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Emeritus. Uh, taking no more for questions. We want to take, uh, a vote on this now and I'm. Will ask, do you want me to read the motion one more time? I was doing, I will read one more time. That the motion regarding the staff report. CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine parking updating and consideration be deferred to allow for further consultation with BIA and surrounding businesses and that the matter be placed on a future council meeting agenda for considerations.
Call for recorded vote, please.
Clerk, there is a recorded vote for this. Thank you. Okay, I'm not quite sure whether there's a date set for this, your Madam Clerk, or a comeback for for this deferral. Yes, Madam CAO.
So through through the Deputy Mayor, the report can come back at the next council meeting as 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 was said, the report will come back in in the format and everything that exists today. The additional consultation, there wouldn't be additional consultation that would come back in any report, because it's going to come back as as is without any additional direction.
Thank you very much, Madam CAO. Are there any questions regarding as explained by the CAO that is coming back at the next meeting? Seeing there is a recorded vote, I'll ask the clerk to ask the questions.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, members of council. You've heard the motion to defer. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Counselor Meredith. I think you're on mute.
Counselor Meredith, you're on mute. Yeah.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Post.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Conton.
No.
Counselor Bald.
Yes.
Counselor East.
Yes.
Counselor Ball.
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon.
No.
Motion is carried. Six to two.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We will now move on to the next item. We are now under number three for the staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seventy notice signs procedures and protocols update dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three be received and that council approves the addition of the site plan control minor variance and consent applications to the notice signs procedures and protocols document and that number two that the council approved the updated notice signs procedures and protocols document in accordance with the attachment number two to staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seventy. And third, that council delegate the authority to make changes to the notice signs procedures and protocols document as required to staff. I do need a mover on this. Do I have a mover? Counselor East. Secondar, Counselor Ball. You read the motion and open this up for discussion on the floor, so are there any council members who'd like to speak to the item?
Counselor Meredith, did you pull this item? Maybe you'd like to fill us in or have some comment?
I did pull it. I'm I'm, you hear me? I did. I did pull it. I'm missing my email because I have I didn't have a a printer option down here in in Greece. So I believe the question was with with this was it, I was asking, I believe it was the pros and cons to staff for this this notice signs procedures and protocols up. I believe that that was my question. I just can't find my documentation on right now on going through my emails for some reason.
Thank you, Counselor.
That makes sense.
Okay, are there any further discussions that you have? Our planning department, Mr. Ferguson, can you have a few comments or questions or sorry, answers?
Yeah, three, three Deputy Mayor to to council. So Counselor Meredith, yeah, you got, well, you had two questions for staff. One, you're correct, it was the pros and cons. The other one had to do with costs. So with our current signage that we have for development applications for committee of adjustment, so minor variance is a consensus, we have standardized signs that we go and we we give them the sign, they post it on their property, and then we come by and we attach additional information to that. So there's no additional cost for that rezonings and official plan amendments. We did. We the applicant is required to go and get those signs done themselves. The cost for this enhanced signage is probably about fifty bucks. Right now, talking to a local signage company in town is about $250 to get one of these signs done under our new process. It's not charged based on the designs of the sign. It goes by the the actual signage size. So whether going a little bit larger in order to accommodate all the the additional information that we're trying to provide on the signs, the cost is very, very minimal in 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 staff's opinion, in the grand scheme of of a development file and how much it costs for consultants and application fees. In terms of the pros and cons, as council may be aware, there's a lot of changing legislation in the planning world, especially over the last two years. And some of the Planning Act applications have actually eliminated public meetings. Delegated authority has gone to staff. So as part of that, staff have been reviewing our procedures, our policies and trying to ensure that we maintain our public consultation engagement. So as part of that, we looked at what can we do if it's, for example, a site plan application that is proposing an apartment? And it doesn't require public process. It's so there's no public meeting. That delegation to approve those types of applications have now has now been delegated to staff by the province. So but we want to ensure that council and the public is aware that, hey, there's a file that has been submitted for this property. So within the staff report on page five, you can see what our current template would be and then what the proposed one would be. So we've done simple things like adding a QR code to it. This QR code, anyone, if they're out walking their dog or walking past the site, they can scan it with their phone. It takes them to our to our website. And on our website, we have a list of all of our current development applications. It is listed by the property. So if someone's walking around, they see a particular property, they scan it, it brings them to the site, they then click on the actual application number. And within that, it has all the material that's been submitted with the application, elevation plans, any sort of planning justification reports, engineering reports, anything that staff have received to process will be included on that website. We also are looking to include some sort of conceptual design. So that way residents know that, hey, this is this is what it potentially could look like. It's not going to be concrete, because there may be some design changes as you go through that Planning Act process. But at least it gives them an opportunity to to visualize as they're walking past the site to to see what that may look like. And maybe if you're sitting on your computer and you look at it, oh, you can kind of visualize it, but when you're on site and you're actually standing there and you see, okay, that's going to be an apartment building or a townhouse, it gives them an opportunity to to visualize a little bit better. So we feel that this is beneficial because it keeps the public engaged. It keeps council informed of the developments that are coming through the municipality, because, like I said at the start, the province has been has been trying to increase the housing stock, trying to that's been pumped through ever through all the media and and through all of our planning legislative changes to try and get these approvals done quicker. So by eliminating public meetings now for for a plan of subdivision, for example, there's no more requirement for a public meeting for that. So we want to ensure that while it's not required under the Planning Act, that you have to put a sign up. We want it. We want to make it part of our process, that you have to put that sign up. So that way residents can see, oh, there's a plan of subdivision coming in here, and they can go to that QR code, they can call staff, and we can provide further information to them. So that was the reason for the update. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them. I'm I'm not sure if that answers your quick questions, Counselor Meredith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for for the update. Are there any further questions from council? I have one from his worship.
Yeah, thanks. I'm glad you had a chance to speak to this. I mean, some of these things do flow through our consent agenda without anyone knowing. This is really progressive, and I love the fact that you guys are being, you know, forward thinking on this and providing more opportunities for people to get a deeper understanding of what's being developed in and around the community. QR code and all that extra data on the webpage, including the the design pictures and things you don't normally get off just a static sign, I think is a great idea. So kudos for being forward thinking on this. And even though you don't have to do it, you're doing it anyway. And that's exactly the kind of service delivery that rate payers in the community are looking for. So you know, I didn't really have a chance to call it out, except now it's pulled. So, you know, slow clap for you guys. That's great. I can't wait to see these things and be able to promote them around the town.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there any further questions? Seeing that. You heard the motion? I will ask for those in favor. Those opposed? That's carried. We are now, excuse me, we are now moving on to item number CS number ten point four three CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seven one transient shopper dock fees. I do have a motion here that I will read and I do need a mover and a secondar. That staff report CSR twenty twenty-three dash seventy-one transient shop per dock fees at Midland Harbor, September to seven twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three be received and that council approves two hours of complimentary dockage at the town harbor for transient shoppers and an hourly fee of five dollars for any additional time berth at the harbor and that council direct staff to implement to implement the fees and rules and procedures regarding the use of transient shopper docks at the harbor in twenty twenty-four. Do I have a mover on this? Mayor Gordon? The secondar? Counselor Ball? You heard the motion? Are there any particular discussions with this item? Yes, your worship.
I just want to give the mic to whoever pulled this, because I'm sure there must be some questions of staff around this report, and after that, I've got a couple of comments.
I did. I did pull it.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Meredith, can you speak to to this if you pulled it?
Yeah, I just had one question I have for staff. Did the harbor master bring these recommendations that to to staff?
Do I have a staff member that can respond to Counselor Meredith?
To Counselor, to Counselor Meredith, yes. The harbor master and I speak regularly, and we've discussed some of the logistical issues with having shopper docks, and so we've developed these procedures, and he's reviewed the report as well.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor, do you have a follow up?
I just said thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yes, your worship.
Thanks. I get down to the harbor quite a bit, talking with the harbor master about some of the forward thinking ideas he's got for improving service delivery at the town dock, as well as ways to try and increase revenues. I mean, this is going to be a recurring theme at user fees, non-resident fees, all these things we need to do to bring more revenue in to help offset tax increases. And as we're going to talk about later, we're staring down a five to seven right now. So I, again, to be commended for thinking up ways to make sure that customers are served well at the town dock. And I know Rick and his team do a fantastic job. I get people emailing me, calling me, raving about their experiences at the town dock. So, you know, when recommendations like this come in to make sure that people aren't, you know, effectively camping and occupying these spots that are intended to have turnaround for our visitors. I think it's a great initiative. They have the ability to enforce it. And I've even heard that for people that, you know, don't pay their fees down there, they'll even go and chain the boat to the dock, so they can't just slip away in the middle of the night not having paid their fees. So they're being really, really business minded down at the harbor, and I really appreciate that, because it's an expensive operation for us. But, you know, being the gateway to thirty thousand islands, there's an expectation that we have marine related recreational opportunities in Midlands. So I'm, it's good to see this. It's always a bummer to to have to talk about fees, but it's going to be a recurring theme as we move through this budget cycle. And I think it's just inevitable. So good on the 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 staff down at the town dock for trying to find ways to mitigate costs and to make sure that people rotate through and visit our lovely downtown and don't end up camping in those those spots.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
Right here, right here.
Sorry, Counselor Meredith. Go ahead.
No problem. The how many are the shopping docks and transient docks? Are they in the same same category? Or are they two different categories? And how how many of each would we have? Or what would be the definition of a transient? I guess a transient would be overnight and a shopper dock would be kind of hourly. Is that what we're we're second differentiating differentiating them from?
Counselor Meredith, yes, the transient shopper docks are using the transient slips that we have. So when someone's made a reservation, a paying customer's made a reservation, sometimes when they show up, there might be someone who's been shopping who hasn't paid. They are staying beyond their intended stay. So this will allow that when someone's made a reservation to come in and slip, getting right into their slip.
Okay, and how many transient shopping docks are proposed? Or or is it the same amount that that there always has been just for just putting in the the shopping kind of rules in?
Yes, to Counsel to Counselor Meredith, yes, it's the same number of transient docks that we have now, so it's about eight to ten. And it will be at the harbor master's discretion as well. It's a first come, serve, first serve if we have spaces available to accommodate shoppers.
Thank you for the response. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take the vote on this. The staff report CSR twenty twenty-three dash seventy-one transient shopper docker dock fees at Midland Harbor, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three be received and the council approves two hours of complimentary dockage at the town harbor for transient shoppers and an hourly fee of five dollars for any additional time berth at the harbor and that council direct staff to implement the fees and rules and procedures regarding the use of transient shopper docks at the harbor in twenty twenty-four. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing that's carried? We will now move on to the next item. My apologies for that. We are at number CSR twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three volunteer policy. This item was pulled. And I will read the motion. And when you need a mover and a secondar, that staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three volunteer policy dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. twenty twenty three be received and that council approved the proposed volunteer policy outlined in this report and has attached and that the policy be effective September twenty seven twenty twenty three. Do I have a mover on this? Counselor East? Second by Counsel Post? You've heard the motion. Are there any discussions, particularly the person who pulled this item? So there's quite a few. I'll just, I will go with Counsel Emeritus first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton, through you to staff. What would the be the immediate financial impact and future yearly financial impacts of this policy? And please break down the costs.
Do we have a staff member to respond to this? Yes. Go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counsel Emeritus. The immediate cost is nothing. We have an HR team that is in place that will administer this. There are no other financial outlays. We are already using volunteers. This is simply putting procedures in place to regulate these volunteers so that we have formalized procedures.
Thank you for that response. Follow up, Counselor Emeritus, or your?
Yes. Just a follow up, please. So I hear, you know, I go, I've been going through this, the reports on this agenda and we're always, there's always administrative costs unforeseen administrative costs, whether it be parking or, you know, the at the rec center and so forth. So by by working on this, there are no additional administrative costs.
Yeah, yes, a follow up with a response?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Counsel Emeritus. There are no administrative costs over and above we've been incurring for several years. We've been using volunteers in the past for such things as the Butter Tart Festival. This is just a formalized procedure so that we can ensure that the staff members know what their procedures are for using volunteers and that the volunteers are protected.
Thank you very much for that. I do have Counsel McDonald.
Thank you. I did forward some questions and about the actual policy language. And will I go through my list or and you can answer them individually? Would that help? So and seven B, it's once this policy is approved, and I found that odd to be in a policy agreement. Seven B, once approved. The policy will be communicated to the staff who are expected to review and follow its content.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Counsel McDonald. This policy is in draft at this point. It is not formalized or passed. Once it is passed, it will then come out a draft. So at this point, we still need to have this approved.
So. Will you follow?
Yes. And can, may I continue with my list then?
If you keep it down to your middle, yes, go ahead.
They're they're just pretty straightforward questions. So once the draft is removed, that once approved would will be removed. Okay. Periodic review. Who defines periodic? That was in seven D.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Counsel McDonald. All policies should go through a periodic review, just when there are legislative changes or changes within the town structure, or if we are using volunteers in a different way. There could be issues that would deal with the unions and other HR matters, perhaps that would require a review and a possible amendment, which would then come back to council for their consideration.
You.
Thank you.
Counsel, how many questions do you have?
I have two more.
Two more. Okay, thank you.
And they're related to eight, three, one, eight, four, C, and one. Regarding the police, eight, three, one says provide a police check. Eight, four, C says provide a police check. And then nine, one says criminal record check if deemed appropriate. So I was thinking that eight, three, one and eight, four, C should, if deemed appropriate. And clarifying that a police record check and a criminal record check is the same.
Will our staff member respond?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Counsel McDonald. In this proposed policy, these different sections are separating out the responsibilities of the various people involved in the program. Eight, three deals with the responsibility of the volunteer and eight, three, I is to provide a record check as required. So if the town the situation where the volunteer is being used, if the town requires a police check or a vulnerable record screening, then that would be requested and provided by the volunteer in eight, four. That is the supervisor's requirement to obtain review and ensure that what was requested actually provides the compliance that we require.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I guess I was ignoring the as required part after the track. Sorry about that. It's the same as if deemed appropriate as required. And the last thing I was suggesting, A three B states that volunteers are required to be prompt and reliable. But this is not reflected in the agreement and release waiver and liability form.
Yes, remember staff.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Counsel McDonald. The forms that are attached to this policy being the waiver and the application form, those are completed when a volunteer is applying for a certain position. They don't set out the terms and conditions of their actual volunteer program. They will be different in each and every program. The volunteers will be required to do certain things for butter tart, which may be different from, say, a weed holder for operations. So there will be different terms and conditions that would not fall within the guidelines of the forms that are attached.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, are you finished, Counsel McDonald? Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. I just have a comment to make that I would request from counselors, any items that come in the future that we ask staff to answer some of these questions in advance if possible. And that will be a little more efficient in time to move the agenda forward.
These questions, just a comment, these questions were submitted ahead of time.
Okay, so you're just following up at this time, I think. Thank you. Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor of the motion? Or do you want me to read the motion again? All in favor? Those opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. We are now under item. Report municipal alcohol policy. I declared conflict on this. I will pass this over to the mayor to read the motion. And he'll take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show that Deputy Mayor is well pulled back from his seat. And just for those online traditionally, when you're the virtual pulling back of seat is to turn your camera off online if you're tapping out of discussion, which happened earlier with Counselor Downey.
Worship, I also have a conflict.
All right. Well, then I guess my announcement of shutting your camera off is timely then. That's that's you it virtually. Nothing prevents Counselor from listening to these things. You just can't be seen to be participating. That's all. Any rate, I need a mover and a second to get this report on the floor. So moved by Counselor East, second by old. That staff report CSR twenty twenty three dash seventy four municipal alcohol policy dated September twenty seven twenty twenty three be received and that one. The council repeal bylaw two thousand and eight dash twenty six, the council repeal bylaw twenty ten dash one oh eight. And lastly, the council approved the proposed municipal alcohol policy update outlined in this report and that the policy be effective for all bookings made on or after September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Perhaps we'll open the floor with some staff insight into this report. And then we'll take questions from council.
Want to comment, first of all? Mayor Gordon?
Yep, go ahead, Counsel Emeritus.
I did. I did submit quite a few questions on this subject. I didn't get any answers back. They would have been, I would have liked to study the the answers coming in. And I feel that if I ask the questions, I'm not going to actually get a true grasp of the whole thing without going over the the answers. So I want to put a motion regarding the staff report to be deferred as well. The CSR twenty twenty three seventy four municipal alcohol policy and the CSR twenty twenty three seventy five special event policy to be deferred to the next meeting.
Okay, so just to be clear. This is this is now a recurring theme tonight. You're supposed to submit your questions ahead of time. It's a courtesy. You don't have to. Sometimes it's critical to kind of wait till the last second. So you did the right thing in submitting your questions. Having staff answer them offline, you know, by email to you basically deprives the public from the from hearing the question and learning the answers. So that effectively you're making your mind up about the questions and the answers outside of council, which, you know, if it's a quick and easy yes, no type thing, I can understand that. But some of the questions, especially the the deeper ones that, you know, I'm going to reference back, the last thing we just deferred. None of those questions that got asked and were answered, albeit not everybody could read them today, got right into the public record. The public has no benefit now to mull over the responses because it's been deferred until the next meeting. If we do that yet again with this one, you know, none of those Q and A's are going to happen. And I really, I think we're we're doing a disservice to the public by just deferring things. We really need to start using this council meeting for what it's for, to talk about the reports and the agenda, ask staff the questions, listen to their response and make a decision. And if we're not happy and we can't get enough details out of staff and you feel, no, not educated enough about the subject matter to make a decision, you either have the option of voting it down or deferring it. But I would argue we really need to have the conversations before we just move to defer things. But I'm in council's hands because I'm only one vote on these things. So that's just my little preamble around deferrals because it's it's just starting to become, you know, something I think I'm not going to say abused, but I really think we're not helping our cause or the the public. So that being said, we have, unless you want to pull it. I'm more than happy to. Let's let's talk about the default right now.
Can I comment to that?
Counsel Emeritus?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what proper procedure procedure is in this. If I could defer it after the discussion and I ask all my questions, then is that?
Well, technically, it's on the, you've said it now. So it's like letting the gene into the bottle. We dealt with this with Midland Bay Landing too. So we really have to use that magic word defer very carefully in a in a council meeting. So.
Okay, well, can you answer the question for for further? So I know.
But let's just let the clerk weigh in because we get like muddy waters in the procedure. I want to make sure the proper, you know, rules here without, you know, stifling conversation. Little technical difficulty with mics. They're trying to get one going. Here it is.
Thank you, your worship. Counsel Emeritus, you have put a motion to defer on the floor, so you need a second there and council can just discuss the motion to defer.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. I need a second there. If it doesn't get a second there, it dies and we go back to our conversation. Do I have a second there?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second there, Counselor McDonald. Therefore, we now open the discussion around the subject of deferring this. I'll use the same. And I tried to say this earlier. And by the way, I know you called a point of order. I wasn't going to argue with it at the time, but it wasn't a point of order. I will give advice again that if we defer this, this exact same report is coming back to us at the next meeting. Nothing's going to change. So deferral, we need to understand if there's no opportunity for rework or rethink. It is literally rinse and repeat, throw the boomerang, wait for it to come back. So that being said, let's have a conversation about deferring this report. Counselor Post?
I'm, I guess I don't really understand where some of this is coming from for deferring because we are encouraged to ask questions to to you, the administration and get answers because it helps us make decisions. And catching you guys off guard with twenty questions at a council meeting is unfair. You're not prepared for an answer. So I'm not even sure where we stand at this point. Do we try to get the information and try to make the best decision? And when it comes up, we would talk about it and we would say what our answers were. We would say we asked the question and you would you would have an answer. You could answer yourself or we could say that we know because we talked to you. It's just almost confusing tonight because we do or we don't. We try to make the best decision with the information that we can gather and share with the public. And I'm not saying we should defer everything, but if we don't feel confident and we can't talk about it properly in open session, I don't know how that's any service to the public either. I just, I feel a little confused right now because I want to do this, right? I want to get the information from you, share it with the public, have a conversation with with council and make a decision. It should be truly that simple. It's hard as somebody's decisions are. Thank you.
That that's absolutely perfectly valid, except in this case, none of these questions were asked to staff. So if you are having struggling with why you can't go on with this, you haven't asked staff any questions. And you can't now because we're only talking about a deferral. Counsel Emeritus referenced his reason for deferral is that he asked staff questions and he had yet to get a reply. Therefore, let's defer it. I would say let's not defer this. Let Counsel Emeritus put his questions on the public record. Let staff answer them. And if he's not happy with the answers, he can vote this thing down. Or he can move for deferral because he'd like to get more information. But we're preemptively deferring things before we have the conversation, which makes no sense. And what you just said makes absolute sense. You want to have the information. I'm not asking anyone in this council to make a decision unless they feel they possess all the facts, even if they don't like the facts. But again, nobody's asked a single question about this report and we're we're suggesting deferring it. So I would argue, why don't we not defer this? Ask your questions, give staff the chance to fill you in. And if you feel compelled to defer at the end of our conversation because you just haven't got enough, then table it. But so I just think we're doing things bass ackwards here. But again, I'm only one guy. I'm just, but I'm telling you from my experience last term, and I know we went through this quite a bit, Counsel Post last term too. So needless to say, I don't support this deferral. I'm here to to get on the business of the town and we're, what's this one? Oh, and I think we should be talking about this tonight and then call a vote. So at any rate, that's my two cents on it. Who else would like to weigh in on the deferral? Counsel Emeritus?
That was my question. I thought if you had to defer something, it had to be beforehand. I'd love to to discuss this and then defer it after. If that is is processed, then that's fine. Because the other one was deferred at the start of the meeting, I just followed that lead. So that's why. But I wouldn't mind getting these these questions answered, but they are. I'm not sure if they're going to have the numbers that I want. So none of them were answered. I could give you the answer I got. I don't think you want to hear it. The the one email that I did get, I could repeat it for public record if you want. I could read it to you right now.
Well, we couldn't right now because we're talking about the deferral. So
Okay.
Let's get through the deferral and I Let's get through the deferral. And I I think I've tried to properly explain the concept of deferral now twice. And I'm not trying to be flip and turn anything, counsel. I just, it's really important. When you say that word, all things stop. And we don't have any option. There's no, you know, do-overs. So I would need you to be really thoughtful about using the word deferral. But for now, we got deferral on the floor. So there's no other conversation about deferral. Let's call the question on deferral. If it passes, it's deferred. It comes back to us in three weeks. If it doesn't pass, let's start asking questions again. And Counselor Meredith, you can you can roll away because that is in fact your entitlement and job as and role as a counselor. So I will call the question on deferral. All those in favor of deferral? All those opposed? Okay, so the deferral has been defeated and we are back to our original motion. And Counselor Meredith, I'll let you lead the way because I think it's very, very important for your questions to be asked and answered.
My my first question is, can I defer at the end of this after your uh counsel? Pardon?
Don't say the D word. Yes, you're free to advance a deferral anytime you want. I just suggest don't do it upfront. Let's leave it for the end.
Okay, so do you want me to read all the all the questions? Because the staff do have all the questions. Do you want me to read them all at once and they can answer me uh at one time? Or should I do it one at a time? What what would you prefer?
Well, would perhaps it would be good to let staff just quickly speak to the this report, the spirit of the report. For the people following along, because of course, we all have the advantage of having read the report. Whether or not we like it is a different story, but let's just give staff a chance to present basically why the report exists. And then perhaps some questions will be answered during that presentation. And if not, then it's uh, you know, it's open season. Is that fair, Counselor Meredith?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, let her rip.
Uh, thank you, Worship. As the uh one thing staff we do, and we've talked earlier today, and there's been some other notice motion around reviewing policies and procedures. Uh, so last year, uh, one of the areas we were looking at is our bookings and the booking software we use down at the rec center for our event planning. And as we started looking at that policy and procedure, and we're updating the software we use for that, other issues came up. And one of the issues that came up was around how are we handling uh the management of alcohol, uh, our inventory of alcohol, our our day-to-day handling of alcohol, handling of cash receipts, cash tips, how the uh staff are paid sometimes by by payroll, sometimes they're paid through cash uh by the uh people who are running or or who have booked the event. And we realized in Houston, we have a problem. We didn't have good good control, good fiduciary control or good uh policy control. So what we've done, we over the last year, we we've tried to fix and up update some of our uh procedures around event planning. And in others, uh, the recommendation tonight is on the alcohol side uh that we think it's best that that be done by the private sector uh for for events instead of us. And in in this report is is outlining the fact that um it isn't about cost. It's really, when we look at the the roles that municipal staff play and the jobs we have, is buying alcohol for a private party a core competency that municipal staff should be doing? Uh, we are actually undercutting the private sector uh by providing the services. Uh, we're subsidizing it with taxpayer money as outlined in the in the report. And it's also against the law under the municipal act for us to be competing against the private sector for the provision of services that are core to our business. So therefore, you know, what we're saying tonight is, you know, alcohol can be continue to be uh served at events. But instead of town staff going to the liquor store and the beer store and buying that, it should be a private sector provider, a private caterer. That's what this is saying tonight. So uh there are some groups that uh would like us to continue to do that work for them. Personally, and as staff, this recommendation going uh here tonight is, we don't think that's what our staff should be doing. So the recommendation is, if you want to rent the space and have a party and have liquor supplied, you're going to hire a food caterer, you hire bar services independently. At the MCC, that's how it works. So we're, you know, basically emulating what would be done at the at the Midland Cultural Center. So that's what this is about. Uh, you can see in the report, there's some financial implications that we lose money today, but it's not a lot of money. It's this isn't about the money. It's really about should town staff uh be uh providing services that should be provided by the private sector and not subsidized by the taxpayer.
Thanks. There's a highlight. Okay, Counselor Meredith, the floor is yours.
Does anybody else have any questions before I begin?
I have Counselor Ball on this here if you'd like. Counselor Ball?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, I just want to speak to the fact that number one Judy's letter, um, she asked us if a staff a staff member, a hired staff member has to be on site still, even if we are not supplying alcohol, the same number of staff have to be there or paid by us. Can you just speak to whether that is true or not? I don't think I saw a response to her from us, so I just want to ask that.
Us staff have to be in the building because we have it open, but the, you know, staff wouldn't have to attend uh under uh the provision of holding the liquor license by that private sector. They would have to have the appropriate number of bartenders, appropriate uh number of security if that was deemed appropriate. So those staff people, so for us, we would be in the building somewhere, but we wouldn't have to be at the event.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question I have is, um, do we currently have alcohol services in our policy or as our booking policy to have that supplied? Or is that an an extra payment when somebody books an event with alcohol?
Uh, through your worship for clarification, under our current policy is is the question?
Yes, under our current booking policy, if somebody books an event with alcohol, we're supplying the person that gives them the alcohol. Do they pay extra for that? Or is that included in the booking fee?
Uh, they pay uh the uh cost of the bartending services. Uh, the, as I said, some of our procedures though, sometimes they pay cash directly to the bartenders, which is uncontrolled, even though they're our employees and other times they're uh through payroll. So it's that's one of the things we became aware of as we've gone through this process.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just one more question. Um, are we planning to secure a secondary company that will be directly used in our bookings? Because I can't imagine having to book an event and then also having to find somebody to do the bar as well. Um, I know that the catering, they'll have to do that, but an added addition of having a space without that already there, I think that we will lose clients to be able to book. And I know there are a lot of um staff parties that are booked out of there that use alcohol. Um, and I would hate to see them go somewhere else and not have those bookings because they're trying to find all over town uh somebody to use for that. Like, can we have it set up so that we have one person that we use that has the contract for that service?
Uh, through your worship, I understand the MCC has, you know, seven or eight different companies they use. So it's up to the person renting the the facility to find the most cost-effective service provider. I'm because I would believe each of those uh caterers uh who provide bartending services might have different fee schedules and different offerings. So it allows the uh person who wants to have an event to book an appropriate uh service provider.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I lied. I have one more question. Um, I'm just wondering, when you mentioned them being paid cash that we weren't aware of, is there not an ability for us to tighten up our regulations surrounding this without completely eliminating it? Like, why is the recommendation to completely eliminate this from a radar instead of updating what we're already doing to ensure that we are correctly paying people with payroll, et cetera?
Uh, through your worship, and that's, you know, why we're here tonight to discuss this. If council wishes us to continue the services, we do have to improve uh our our controls and uh make sure we're providing uh our best practice uh for, you know, this bartending services. So yes, we will have to in improve our uh systems if if this that's a decision of council tonight.
Okay, so that was not looked at first. The recommendation was just just to get rid of it without looking into whether it would be better to just utilize our services.
Through your worship, oh, uh, over the last year, we've been been looking at at these issues and given uh all the other issues that come about, uh, we haven't got there. We may have to go in camera if you wish to talk specifics around uh performance management.
Okay.
Supervisors, management, uh, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just wondering why there that was the recommendation, just get rid of it. That's all I just was wondering.
Madam CEO, you have some uh some color to add to this commentary?
Yes, through your your worship. Um, the one thing I'd say as well is to to get us to where we need to be from a compliance standpoint would be would cost, I'm just going to throw it across and I don't know the exact, but I would think we would have to have someone come in and help us actually to create everything that we need to do in order to be in compliance and do things well. And so I will throw it a cost of fifty thousand and, you know, the thoughts knowing that we're going into budgeting with everything and knowing it is, as uh Mr. Campbell said, it's not a core service to the municipality. That's why we came up with this. There are to your point, other options for people to be able to to hire in bartenders. And there's, you know, there is other options, but that's that's why we came to the conclusion.
Thank you. Um, are we lowering our event fees for the special permit fee to be included so that it's the same cost? Or are we having a special permit fee for alcohol permit? Do they have to pay a fee to get that?
Through your worship, there's a there's a cost to rent the room and that's the same no matter what the event. And then if you were to have it, uh, if you had procured the alcohol bartending from us, that was an extra cost. So that cost wouldn't be there i- in the future, you would just have a a room rental rate.
Okay, so there won't be an additional permit cost that would be over and above?
The the applicant would have to get their own license or have it provided by their caterer and there would be a cost for that. It's to get your, I understand it's thirty dollars to get the the individual license for your party. So, you know, it would add thirty dollars uh that instead of coming through our cost through an extra fee, they'd be paying that separately to uh lottery and gaming.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't raising our rates there.
I wouldn't say that yet because we haven't got to budget. I want to get that number down from seven percent. Something's going to change around here. Okay, Counselor Meredith, you've been patiently waiting there uh with your your questions on simmer mode. Please go ahead. You've got the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gordon. Um, I first want to um comment on Madam CEO, CEO's uh um figure of fifty thousand dollars. Um, I was in the bar business for twenty-five years. To get uh your um inventory levels and 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 everything, um, um, you know, basically strained out at the uh at the rec center would not come anywhere near fifty thousand dollars. I would do it for free, bring or recommend a team to come in, a local team that I worked with for twenty-five years and with with great success um um to implement um those uh strategies. So I just wanted to comment on that. So that number is 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 way out to lunch. So I will, would you like to comment on that first before I go into my uh questions? Or should I just continue?
So so through you, through your worship, um, you know, I I don't have the the figure and you're right, it may be high. My thoughts are, we need to actually, if we had someone in, it would be to evaluate the service, see the feasibility, because as we look at the numbers, the numbers are not um where we need them to be. So is it some, it would be to to do a service review on that as well as, to your point, it wouldn't wouldn't take fifty thousand by any means to set up proper processes to put in place. But it would be to evaluate to see if that is a business that is is viable for the municipality and to be able to report back to council on on that. And and as we said, it's not all about, you know, making money or, you know, there are other services to the community, but I think that would that would be the the reason why I suggested that cost.
Thank you. Um, and and again, I think um alcohol revenues, uh, it is, it is a a great revenue revenue stream. Um, and to take it away from the the rec center, which is struggling and with revenues uh would be disastrous. So but I will continue on with my questions. Um, so my first question was uh was the this recommendation uh from town uh uh SNS SRC manager? Uh, if not, is the manager a hundred percent on board with this recommendation or managers?
Campbell?
Uh, the the draft policies uh in rapport were circulated to staff and this is a staff recommendation.
So there hasn't been any uh conversation with this recommendation to the the managers, food and beverage manager or management of the staff, whoever handles the alcohol?
The that the the question is, have staff been been consulted? Staff are aware of of this? Yes. Uh, their their opinion uh is part of what's been presented here. Uh, as with council, there's not always agreement uh amongst uh staff. And when we're talking about change management, it's always a difficult discussion to have with with staff. And, you know, we need to uh ensure that we bring when changes are made, whether it's on this policy or any other operational change that, you know, we work with staff to make sure we implement successfully what change is. But change is difficult to to talk to staff about.
Okay, maybe I should be, uh, thank you. Uh, I just need to be a little bit more specific. So what the staff that actually is running the food and beverage uh at at the rec center, is that who we're talking about? Are we talking about seniors, senior level staff?
Through to Counselor Meredith, I I staff at the um, there have been questions that were asked just to get a fulsome picture of of what is happening in the staff report as it says, there was a lot, there is a loss per event. So that was one of the triggers. So we're not actually making money on on this. So it was taken a look, it was asking some of the if there are procedures in place and what are they? So that was was asked and um staff interacted with that. As for the final recommendation, um, not all staff across the organization were asked for the final recommendation. We it was gathering of information, but but to your point and your ask, yes, staff were asked for the information to make the decision on this. And, you know, one of the decisions that didn't really come out is it is a loss to us. So that's sort of a first trigger. And then the um some of the compliance isn't there. So that's what formed the decision, but staff had the ability to provide information for us to make decisions. I don't know if that is helpful.
Um, I just don't know what staff was consulted uh that who has hands on. Um, who is who is the staff member that is in charge of um charging?
Counselor Meredith, just to be right here, this this is almost like badgering in a court.
Okay.
We're not court, but like suffice to say, I know you've asked a question several times. I I know where you're going with this. I totally know where you're going, but it it isn't really appropriate for us to try and hammer away on this. I think
Well, I I yeah, the answer I'm getting is that staff were spoken to about this. Uh, event staff were spoken, this is the answer that 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 they were a hundred percent on board with this. That's the answer. Or they brought up this situation. But anyways, I will go to my next question. Uh, you're just, you're just dancing around the question, I think. So anyway.
So this is like, we'll let Madam CEO respond to this because I, I mean, this is important because I'm eating the the bottom line, people watching at home. Just like, we'll let Madam CEO respond to this because I, I mean, this is important because I mean, the, the bottom line for people watching at home is not all staff employ the town of Midland and perhaps some even directly related to this, particularly agree on a personal level with this, this option that's before us. And
And I, I understand that. That's why these, these questions should have been answered prior to coming into council. None of these, none of these questions were answered. So that's why I put the, the fur on. So anyways, go ahead.
So through, through to you, Council Meredith. So the, the way that we actually make decisions at the organization is we'll gather the information from staff. Staff that will provide the information and it is up to either SLT, the executive director or myself, those that are actually liable for the decisions. And sometimes if we leave the, the decisions up to, to someone that doesn't have the fulsome input, then you know, we're here and, and I'm here to, to do what's best for the organization as a whole. So I, the staff report has come today to ensure that the town is not liable where it does not need to be liable. And it may not be, and to your point, I would assume that not everyone involved likes this decision that we have come to, but the decision is not for any one personal, you know, person like when, when I and others around the table here make the decision, it is for the township as a whole. So staff were not consulted on what they want, what they, like, we didn't say if, do you want this to end or not? And then take what they said. We said, how do you do this? What are the processes? What is required? Can you give us the information? And then we did make the decision. So it was not with all staff input, but we made the decision based on what we felt was best for the organization.
And just as a point of clarification, no, Madam CEO, you're using the word decision. I don't mean to correct you, but I mean, this is recommendation. The decision happens at council table here, to be fair. I know, I know exactly what you mean. But for people following along at home, the corporation itself and the way it's managed is not a democracy. Senior management makes decisions that sometimes staff agree with. Sometimes they're great, sometimes they're not. And then council, in our case, ratifies that by actually making the decision at a vote. This table, all nine of us, is a democracy. So the recommendation comes to us, if we don't like it or we doubt its credibility or anything like that, then we have the option independently to cast our vote accordingly. But I just, I don't want to get into a situation where we're sort of nitpicking with staff or challenging efficacy or, you know, did we ask every employee of the town in Midland whether they agree with this? Because that's, it's, it isn't relevant. It's not a democracy at the corporate level in any business organization. And you know that, Council Meredith. So let's, if questions, but let's not focus on, you know, whether this one particular staffer who you and I both know we're talking about, you know, is in agreement with this. Let's focus on the report, the recommendations, and whether or not you endorse them at council level.
Yeah. So provide full balance sheet detailed expense, profit, loss from January to June twenty twenty two and twenty three, and dating back two years before COVID with the same monthly timeframe.
Okay, that's probably not an easy question to whip out the old Excel sheet out of your pocket, but take a crack at it, Mr. Campbell.
It's provided on page six of the report that detail our sales, our labor costs, our rental revenue, the licensing costs and the administration costs are listed in the report. And that is showing for two thousand seventeen, a loss of two thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars that were subsidized by the taxpayer. In two thousand eighteen, a loss of four thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars that was subsidized by the taxpayer. In two thousand nineteen, a loss of four thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars that was subsidized by the taxpayer. Two thousand twenty and twenty one, we did not report in the report because those were the COVID years. In two thousand twenty two, we had a, a profit of eight hundred and eight dollars. And for the first half of two thousand twenty three, we have a loss of eight hundred and sixty eight dollars. preamble, this isn't really about the money because all those numbers in our entire town budget aren't significant.
Yeah. I think, I think those numbers are, are deeply flawed. That's why I wanted a detailed, detailed report. Those are just giving me numbers and they're not detailed for me to, to go dive deeper and see where their issues are. So that's why I wanted that report. And going back to why I want to get this deferred. So move on to my next question. What is the liquor license?
Sorry, just, just on the numbers. A detailed report would show drill down granularity. The summary report that we're looking at right now would still
I, I don't agree with the numbers. I don't want to summarize.
Okay, so. So you mean that like one, two and three don't yet, don't add up? You know, in detailed report?
I don't know how you can have those losses. It's, it's, it's almost impossible to have those losses. I, I know it went through the rec center in, in some of those years and, and you're showing losses. Then it's, it's just, anyways, it's, that's why I wanted detailed reports. All right. This is what I did for
Because I mean, be careful on this. We're, we're basically impugning the mathematical skills of either our software or the people that entered the stuff. So we need to be, I think we need to be careful on this. If we're really going to, you know, toss this around.
I can't make a decision whether, unless I get all, all the information. And that's not all the information I asked for. I asked for detailed reports. That's all I'm asking for. You should have it. You should press a button and you should have it.
Madam CFO, can you help us out here?
Thank you, your worship, through you to Councilor Meredith. I think what Councilor Meredith is, is asking for is, is sort of the, the detailed bar tab per event. Am I correct in that, Councilor Meredith?
I, I'm asking for, what is your produce? What, what, what did you pay for produce? What did you, would you pay for supplies? How, where is your, you know, you have your, when you do your inventories, you have some on hand, you have, when, when you're doing your, you know, your inventories at the end of the year inventories, what were they? So these are, these are things that should, you know, you have your profit, you have your expenses, your expenses, you'd have, you know, you do your accounts daily at the end of, end of, end of your, your party or your, every, every party. And you, you would be able to balance out what you have on hand, what you don't. But at the end of the day, I'm not looking for that detail, but I'm looking for, you know, what are we spending our money on? What are those expenses in line item, right? And, and tho- those are, those are the numbers I'm looking for. And, and if those numbers didn't jive, you know, why are we discussing this now in two thousand twenty three? When we have losses prior to COVID? And now you're, you're bringing this up? So I, you know, I, I, I just, I just find there's, there's profit to be made here. And, and we're going to make a decision on, on getting rid of the liquor license when, you know, we're looking to make money. And you're showing losses? I, I don't believe we, there's some, something's got to be wrong. So, so we can fix it a hundred percent. There's no way we can't fix it because there's just, there's no possible way you could lose that much money on, 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 on the liquor sales. Unless, unless, unless the town is, 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 is in, in, inter, inter, inter billing the North Central Sports Wrap for something. Like there's something I'm missing here. So is there some intercorporation billing here from, from department to department that I'm missing? So that's why I want a detailed reports. I don't know what. Anyways, I will go to my next, my next question.
I mean, just to be clear, this is the Board of Governance. We don't get into the weeds like this. I mean, even at budget, Council Meredith, we don't get line by line transactional details. We have to believe the data that the staff give us. And if we're going to table an allegation that they don't know how to use their computer or somebody's falsifying the data, you know, something that's inaccurate, asking us to make it based on deceit. I mean, these are serious. And this is what we're, what you're dancing around right now. So I, I really need to,
That's not what I'm saying. I just wanted a detailed report. That's all I asked for.
We don't get detailed reports though. So that, this is, this is our summary report. This is the information we're being asked to go by. Unless you have evidence to, to produce that is suggesting staffer are deceiving us.
I don't, I just
Based on the data that we're being provided by our executive team.
Okay. I don't have any, no, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I just, it's, it's simple. Detailed reports. Not line, just detail. Anyways.
So through, through, through your, through to Council Meredith, I, I think actually you're sort of calling out what, what I would say I would call out and what we're calling out here is we can't get the detailed reports and this is what we're provided. That is, is why we need to
And that's fine. That's, that's fine. I'll just make my decision on what, what is provided then. So that's all I can go by, right? Then that's fine. So I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I know it's getting late, so I'll just keep on going. So what, what is the liquor license liability portion amount of the insurance policy for the rec center?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through to Council Meredith. Our liability policy does not apportion a certain percentage of the premium to this one item. We have an overall liability policy that covers all town liabilities.
Okay, so if you remove the liquor license from the town, how much savings would you have in liability?
Through you, your worship, through to Council Meredith. I don't believe there would be a savings in an insurance policy premium.
I don't know. I can comment on that. I don't know how you, how you can't have any savings because liquor liability is, is expensive.
Our, our policy itself does not break out to the different liability portions. So we have an overall that just deals with our overall liabilities. They don't apportion a certain percentage of that premium specifically to liquor liability. If we were to remove our liquor license, what it would do would show our insurer that we were taking a proactive approach to limit our liabilities, which could at some point in the future reflect any premium policy. That can't be predicted at this point.
Any follow up, Council Meredith?
Well, I mean, the, the question could be asked to your insurance policy prior to, you know, canceling it and then seeing there's no savings and then, but that question should be able to be asked and that, that insurance provider should be able to give you an answer. That would be my, my response to that. Anyways, I, I heard that and I didn't know that the, my next question was about the MCC, their liquor license, but from what I heard earlier that the MCC doesn't carry a liquor license under, under their, their, about the MCC. So that, that is correct. So they farm it all out and they, they had eight providers. That's what I heard. So I wasn't aware of that. I thought the MCC had its own liquor license and and so I'll go to the next question.
Ms. Ellery's got some input. I think, I think you're repeating back something that she was said, but I don't know that it's entirely accurate. So Ms. Ellery?
Mit, through you, your worship, through to Council Meredith. The MCC does have their own liquor license. They do use that license for their own events. I can tell you, I did contact the MCC about their liquor license. And whether or not they would be willing in fact to provide those services to the town. And that was an affirmative that if we contacted them, if they were available, they would be agreeable to providing services to us for bartending through their license. I can tell you, your question about their liquor license doesn't pertain to us because we don't provide their liability insurance. They have a separate policy. So their apportionment is dealt with specifically by them. It is not a town cost.
Right. So we would have no liability whatsoever. If the MCC had some fatal accident at the MCC, the, the town of Midland would, would not have any liability, correct?
Through you, your worship, to Council Meredith. That, it's a more difficult question to answer in that if the incident or accident were related to the service of alcohol, you are correct, we would not have liability. If it were related to an occupier's liability claim, it's a different question. We have a lease with the MCC. They do provide an indemnification. So there should not be an apportionment of liability against the town for any of your liquor services at the, on the property.
I don't like the word should, but I will move on. What types of, oh, actually, just before I go on my next question, has the, the rec center had any lawsuits or the con fractions since its inception of the, of the liquor license?
Through you, your worship, to Council Meredith. I attempted to make some research and inquiries on this particular item. I have only been with the town for about a year and a half. Prior to me, our, our litigation was managed internally by our clerk's department. I haven't seen that there was a claim related to liquor licensing. I'm waiting for a response from our insurer, which could go back even further. But I don't see that we've had a claim in the past, but that's not the point. The point is it could happen into the future and we're trying to prevent being open to that form of liability moving forward.
Well, I under, I understand what you're saying, but and, and the short answer would be, you know what, if, if, if we go on could, then we, we could get sued at, at Butter Tart as well. So and all our other festivals. So, and I know we're talking about liquor license, but if you're talking about lawsuits, you know, if, if, if I had to, you know, in, in my experience with liquor, if I had to think about the could's all the time, I, I, you know, I obviously would shut my doors if I would do that. So, but I don't think we can.
I think we get the idea, like,
Okay.
He really gives us each two kicks of the can for questions and then we're going way over the snake because I sense how important this is to people. And you do have a lot of deep knowledge as soon as, so I, I really am trying to indulge this to a certain degree, but there's this concept of joint and several liability. So it doesn't matter what, we get looped into everything anyway. It's something we're, it's a bone we're picking with the, the province to get us out of, but so that we really never absolve ourselves from liability, no matter what happens. We get named and everything. So this is more about us getting out of the business of something that is not our core mission. When we're trying to focus on our costs and revenues, we, you know, staff has come into us, things saying this is a risk. We're, the juice ain't worth the squeeze. We're losing money at this thing. And let's get out of it so we can focus on our core mission, which is, you know, running that sports and rec center and not necessarily the catering service that we have been providing. And I like your idea, even though I don't know if you actually floated it, is that, you know, if we want to reduce our liability, but not choose the on off switch of either leave it the way things are with obviously some changes we have to make no matter what for, you know, to protect ourselves. Or B, remove it entirely, which is what's being suggested. Perhaps C, I love option C, the compromise is to look at outsourcing this, just like we did with the, the food stand downstairs. That used to be town operated. And then we got out of that business because again, that's not our business and a third party began operating. And I think that's still the case when it's open. But, you know, we could look at contracting this out entirely, not, not just tell people, hey, go find your own, you know, liquor license provider. We could have a contractor that we engage with who assumes all this liability, still offer the service, but get the town fingers out of it and let, you know, capitalism run. And that, that's an option. Is that something you'd be, you know, that would satisfy you to some degree?
Well, this, this is my problem. We're, we're looking for rev, revenue streams. And if the MCC is, is chomping at the bit to come up to the, to, to the rec center to do, to do our, our events, they must make money. So why aren't we making money? So I, I think we need to give this a chance, get the, you know, as I said, the proper people in place. If, if for some reason there's something going on up there that, you know, why, why we're losing money? I have no idea. I'd be more than happy to go up there and bring a team in that would cost you nothing. It's simple. It's not, it's, 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 it's not a tough. It's not tough to fix this problem, if there's a problem. If there's, you have events and you have a liquor, liquor event and no one's drinking, yeah, you're going to lose money. But if some, if, if, you know, fifty percent of the people have, have some But if some, if, if, you know, 50% of the people have, have some drinks, you shouldn't be losing money. So, and if someone else is, is wanting to come in to do it, like I said, then they must be making money. They must know what they're doing. So I think with, um, the proper, um, you know, the, the, the proper, uh, things in place up there, then, um, I, I just don't want to give up a revenue stream right now and we're, and we're looking for money. We're looking for revenues and it could be a huge revenue stream. So, um.
Okay, just on the MCC point, I'll remind you that, you know, they are not profitable because we're, they're supposed to be paying their insurance and they came to us last budget and they're going to this budget, unable to pay their insurance. So there's, they're not flushing cash. So they're a terrible example, I think, for us to use right now. If we were going to consider this, I would expect us to RFP the operation and have people bid on it. So MCC is just being tossed around. I feel bad for them now because they are, uh, you know, they're probably not the one to, uh, you know, to offer up as the, the money making bar business anyway. Long story short, have we got any other comments from council? Because I think we are, I have a good idea where you're going with your vote on this one. And to be fair, I think I haven't heard from other councillors or we should just call the question because I don't know what we can do. We're going circular on this one. Counselor Ball?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what you just said about having a sole person come in. That's what I was asking Mr. Campbell about, if that was a possibility, so people don't have to run around trying to find their liquor license. I think that's a, a good idea. That's what I was, uh, what I was asking for. So I would support that. But I also see merit in trying to make this a revenue stream. Uh, I am disappointed that there has been this long investigation as to why this won't work when there was nothing put in place or in a report suggesting the opposite and looking at that stream as well. I think Counselor Meritus is correct that we should be looking at this as a revenue opportunity for the town.
I'm, I'm going to vote this down, this recommendation. I think, um, even if there is a loss, it's literally pennies and it's for our community. People who live here, pay taxes and enjoy something small in the, in the big picture. They're enjoying something small in their community. And I really think we could make money at it. But not everything is about making money and we're truly talking about pennies compared to at budget time. Who's going to come to us asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars? And it doesn't even benefit the, the residents here and I'll stop there.
Okay. So we, there's a couple of options here. We could amend this if there was a willingness by council, like we can reject this wholeheartedly or we can, we can ask staff, we can reject this and then ask staff to come back with a recommendation on maybe consulting with the, the people that Counselor Meritus knows to see what's the path to profitability? Is the juice then worth the squeeze? Or perhaps, perhaps come back with an option for an RFP for a third party to operate this. So we don't forego the service, but we just don't, we're not in the delivery side of it. Uh, that's an option for us. It does not exist in this report right now. So we could amend this or we could, uh, vote it down and then come up at another meeting with the direction to staff. So just before I, I call the question on this, is there any appetite to amend this or are we, are you content just status quo? Let's, I get the sense this is going to die tonight. So, I'm, I'm in your hands, council. Counselor Ball?
Uh, I do think there's merit in looking at the profitability of it. Yes. So I would support that. Or anyone want to second that amendment, I guess, to amend to request that we look for that profitability pathway?
Madam Clerk, what, what do you suggest the best way? I mean, obviously you're reading the room here. You know, would you prefer that we leave this thing intact and let it die and come up with a whole new, uh, direction? Or should, is there a suitable amendment that, uh, could see a path to profitability explored as well as a third party to operate this facility? Mr. Campbell?
Through, uh, your worship, if, if council, uh, wishes to, uh, make this into a profitable, uh, service, like a, a, a bar downtown makes money, that's our user fee schedule. And then, you know, we would, uh, raise the rates, uh, for how much we charge for alcohol. Cause that's the only way to do it is to raise our rates. If, if that's what the, the question is, how can we make it profitable? It's, it's an easy answer. It's raise our, raise our fees. And that would, could come through, uh, the budget process in our, in our user fee schedule discussion.
I, I think what's being suggested is that Counselor Meritus's knowledge of this industry and people that he knows may help the, may provide a perspective of profitability that perhaps were other than the fee raising. I, I don't know if that's the case or not, but it would be worth exploring, I suppose, is what I'm asking council. It's not really our line of business, but it is something we have been doing. So.
When, when you look at that summary report, you know, we buy liquor, we get revenue, we have, we charge a minimal amount for alcohol. Uh, even the, um, the health unit has, has said we should, you know, be charging higher, higher rates. So, you know, we, we do underprice our alcohol. You know, we charge minimal, minimal amount. So it's really how much, if we want to make more money, we raise the rates for the room. We raise the rates for our, our staffing costs. We raise the rates for how much we charge for liquor. We want to match, uh, downtown bar at seven or eight dollars a beer, that would, I won't say double our revenue on beer sales, but it would be close. So really the efficiencies of having a, an expert in the bar industry come in would help us deal with our inventory control, would help deal with how do we deal with spillage? Because that's where we're weak in our best practices. Mr. Meritus was tasked for a spillage report. I'd say we don't have one. Well, if we're running a proper bar service, we should have one. We should be weighing their bottles coming in, coming out, know how many are broken. We, we don't do that today. That's part of our governance and our, our controls aren't there. But that's not going to save us any money, uh, or increase sales. You know, really if it's more revenue we want, we have to raise the rates. Uh, if council wishes that we continue the service, we do have to have an expert in to help us, uh, conform to best practices. I'll put it that way.
All right, fair enough. Counselor Ball? And then Counselor McDonald, then I think we'll just call the question. I don't think there seems to be an appetite or a real path to amendment. I think we really just need to deal with this report.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think, uh, what CAO suggested about a consultation report. Uh, basically Counselor Meritus is offering expertise to do that report. Um, that we would pay that $50,000 fee, that was an approximate amount, obviously, uh, to do for free. So I think that we owe it to ourselves and to our community to have a best practice regardless of whether we are, I, I think just watching our hands at the situation shows that we are not wanting to put in the work for our community to make something happen for them. Like that's just how I see, uh, voting this in favor of going to somebody else. I feel like we owe it to at least look at it and look at our best practice and how we could do it. And if it's still at the end of that, not an, an ability, then great, we wash our hands of it. But I think we, we do need to at least try.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just also would, in addition to what is being suggested, would like to hear more about the third party option. Hiring someone to have that there, put a, a request for proposal. We would make a little bit of money from them to have that opportunity for them to make money. So we've got two different avenues, I believe. Mr. Campbell's not looking too convinced.
It wasn't really a question. If, if council wishes us to come back with a, a report with, you know, that consideration, I would say that's in a, you know, are, are you turning down this report or are you asking us, uh, for, uh, a new report? As far as, you know, uh, a, another report coming back to council, if we're going to continue to provide this service and, you know, how we go about, making sure we're, uh, undertaking best practices, I don't think we need to report back to council on that. But if there was, uh, uh, an option that council wishes to, to look at, such as, uh, Counsel McDonald's mentioned, you know, that would, we'd be coming back to council with, you know, here's some other options for, uh, outsourcing and implications of with our collective agreements and things like that. That kind of issue would be a wholesome, wholesome report to bring back to council at some time in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Actually, that's something we hadn't even talked about is collective agreement implications. It was always complicate things. All right. So effectively, uh, Madam Clerk, if we want staff to come back with a report sometime in the future with outsourcing options. And in the meantime, we don't want to have a void in our service delivery such that it is, even though we seem to be not making a lot of money. Then we can defeat this motion potentially. And do we need a new one then for staff to come back and give us a report? Or is it suffice that we've had this conversation and we can expect a report to come? An amendment, which you're working on right now. I see your fingers flying across the keyboard. All right. We'll take a pause for the amended motion and, uh, that Madam Clerk's working on that right now. Uh, we'll wait and see what the wording says. Madam Clerk, I, I, we didn't really mention this, but there are things that we are doing right now that could get us into a legal jackpot with, with alcohol and gaming. It goes without saying that we need to change how we're doing business to be compliant. We haven't talked about that publicly. But that would need to be an assumption that if we were going to keep the status quo, that it's not truly status quo. Some things would have to be changing because there's an exposure right now that we haven't discussed in open session. For CEO or Mr. Campbell, sorry?
Yeah, I was just mentioning the clerk, uh, the policy that's attached isn't just about not serving alcohol. It had other items in it. So, uh, if, depending how council deals with this, we still need to approve a policy. So, uh, that would have to, a revised policy would have to come back unless we can just strike out. We don't serve anymore, something like that. We'll have to, but we'll have to.
Oh, fair enough. This might be a good time for, uh, maybe we'll do a, what a five minute bio break. Give everyone a chance to stretch your legs and while they do some wordsmithing and then we'll see if that amendment, uh, works. So we'll be back in five minutes. It's eight forty-two. We'll see you back at, uh, eight fifty-two. Or that's 10 minutes. We'll call it 10 minutes. Eight fifty-two. Welcome back. Thanks for enduring the momentary blip in TV land. Uh, I have, so we now have an amended motion on the floor, uh, moved by Counselor Ball. I need a secondar for the amended motion to get it on the floor to talk about it. Counselor Prost. And that amended motion reads that staff report CSR twenty twenty-three dash seventy-four municipal alcohol policy dated September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three be received. And one, that staff investigate options for profitability of providing bar services at the NSSRC and to ensure that town is compliant with all AGCO regulations. And two, that staff investigate the opportunity to have a third party provide the bar services at NSSRC. And three, that are revised municipal alcohol policy presented to council at a future meeting. And a technical original mover, Counselor Ball, and this, uh, seems to meet the expectations of the conversation we have. So we're not, um, removing the service at status quo and staff will be looking at to Counselor Meritus's point, ways and a path to profitability while still covering our collective derriers with, uh, some of our issues around AGCO compliance. And also looking at the second option of, of subbing this out. And, you know, diverting liability to a subcontractor who would work for us and manage all these things for us so we can not be in the bar business. And then it'll come back to us for another debate. We can see what that says. So that's the Coles Notes version of the amended motion. Do we have any discussion around that, Counselor Meritus? I think I saw your finger. Not your hand, but your finger. Did I get you wrong?
Yeah, I was just, uh, looking for clarification on number two, but you, you repeated yourself. So, thank you.
Yep, not a problem. I know sometimes the wording on these things are, you know, dry by design, so I tried to add some color to it. Uh, any other questions before I call the question? Nope. Okay. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Lovely. I will pass the, the chair back to Deputy Mayor after his long vocal cord rest and he can have the rest of these reports.
Thank you, your worship, uh, for that taking over for that item. Uh, we have three more items to go through from the consent, uh, agenda that was drawn. We are now going to move on to the next, uh, pulled item. It's an item, uh, on special event policy. I do need a mover and a secondar on this. Do I have a mover? Counselor East? Secondar? Counselor Ball? I will read the motion. That staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seventy-five special event policy, policy dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three be received. And that council approved the special event policy attached to this report and authorizes and directs staff to implement this, implement same. This item was pulled, uh, is anybody who pulled it would want to address this? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you. I did, um, submit a few questions on this report. But I, I only will ask two. I just was wondering an example on page 11 that refers to the exemption to the bylaw. What, who would, for example, be exempted from this bylaw for a special event?
Do we have a staff member to respond to that?
I'm just looking for where the exemption is on that page. Just give me a moment. Okay.
Nine two eight at the very top. Page 11 of sixteen, nine two eight.
Counsel, for clarification, uh, Counsel McDonald, it's clause nine point two point eight on the top page 11. Is that what you're referring to? Nine, nine point two point eight says exceptions to the town of Midlands conditions may be made upon approval from the special event advisory team and or council. Is that what your comment was?
At this point in time, yes.
Yeah, it, it, that's just a, a standard clause that says, even though we have a policy, exceptions can be made if, if appropriate approval is given and some, some may be by staff or come to council. So it's just, you know, a standard, uh, I don't want to say the weasel clause that's in things, but it's, changes can be made if approved, basically.
And I, I did have another question, if I may.
Hello?
Thank you. It was just in regards to um, page, I sp, fifth page, feet, town fees, bylaw and noise bylaw. It refers to the bylaws, but it doesn't number them. Are they usually numbered in this, in a policy?
Uh, through you, uh, Deputy Mayor. If they, if they were, they'd, we'd also always have to say, or as amended. So, you, you know, the, whatever the current noise, if we, if the example is noise bylaw, it would be the current noise file. But if we said noise bylaw ninety-nine dash one two three, uh, you're always having to amend the number. So it's, you know, I guess how specific do we really need to get around something like that when we say it's a bylaw?
Okay, I can accept that. I just wondered. Okay, I can accept that. I just wondered what the practice was. Eventually we'll just provide a link to them.
Thank you, councillor McDonald. Uh, I have councillor Meredith. Councillor Meredith?
Yeah, just unmuting myself here. Thank you. Um, one question, just to what scale is this, uh, special event policy for? And does this policy include SOPs related into, uh, ten point four point five?
Councillor Meredith, this, uh, special event policy applies to all events that are public or invite the public to participate. And that take place on municipal, municipal property. It does not apply to, uh, private rental functions. For example, if someone wants to rent the rec center for their wedding, it doesn't apply to them. It may apply to the, the circus if it's in the rec center though, because it's a larger event, uh, larger requirements for insurance, et cetera. The alcohol policy that's currently exists, uh, will be the one that this policy references until such a time that the current one changes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from councillors regarding this item? Seeing that none. You've heard the motion. I'm gonna ask just, uh, to see if there's who's in favor of this motion? Yes, I'm asking for, sorry about that. Okay, any opposed? Seeing that's carried. Okay, we're on to number eight item that was pulled from the consent agenda. I do need a mover on the budget outlook item. Do you have a mover? Mayor Gordon? Secondary councillor Post? I will read the motion. That staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash seventy-six, twenty twenty-four budget outlook dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three be received for information. I will open this up for discussion from council. I have, uh, the mayor, yes, your worship.
Thanks. Before we, uh, pass it over to staff, I just wanted to say that, just like the parking one, because these are two really big reports or significant import reports on our agenda. I went out of my way to, uh, really promote these ahead of this meeting, uh, by contacting both media. Our two online media, now we don't have print anymore and as well as CTV. And they even on a weekend came up and interviewed me about this pending report so that the community would be informed of both the parking conversation, which is deferred now. And this, uh, conversation that we're about to have about the, you know, the financial pressures affecting the draft budget that's coming our way in December. So just for those that are always concerned about, you know, making sure that public has time to weigh in. Uh, I don't think it's possible for me to have gotten more exposure than, uh, have already given us to, to know and forecast to our residents that we have severe financial pressures impacting our community. And some really tough decisions to make around this council table in consultation with the public when we start doing draft. So I'm glad this report's out. I'm, I'm glad it was pulled. I would have pulled it if someone else hadn't. And I think it's really important to hear from staff next about that bulleted list of serious financial changes and pressures that are on our, uh, on our budget that's coming, including I noticed we have our, our library CEO here, uh, to talk about quite a staggering loss and a blow to the, the library's budget that we're going to have to soak up and ask all of our taxpayers to soak up unless we come up with something like a non-resident fee. So glad this is pulled. Uh, it's a hot topic every year and, uh, maybe we can turn it over to madam CFO to, uh, to talk about the forecast as you found it, as far as you, as your staff are working diligently towards our draft.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so I should note just before I sort of begin, so it, this is the, an outlook. It, it's, it's not the budget. Uh, we did get a few calls today from, from residents, you know, asking about the five to seven percent budget increase. Uh, and so, you know, this, this is the outlook at this point in time, right? And as you said, council does have some tough decisions to make in the coming months. Um, as staff reports are presented, such as tonight through parking, Midland Bay Landing and, and other areas, uh, user fees, that type of thing, before we get to that draft budget stage in, in December. Uh, good news, which I think we could all use tonight. Uh, we did get the OPP billing, billing to, uh, just yesterday, actually. Um, and the estimate is, is much less and, and it's actually right on par to what we're paying this year. So in the report, there is a five percent increase, which again, I do feel was, was a reasonable estimate. Um, given there is some fluctuation in, in calls for service. Um, but in the end, our, our calls for service, we actually got a credit for twenty twenty-two. So when the OPP does their reconciliation to the billing model, there is, it's always a year behind, right? So this year in twenty twenty-four, we get the twenty twenty-two reconciliation. So there, there was a bit of a savings there. Um, having said that, I should note that we are moving to that detachment board and so there will be some added costs there to come. Um, those yet haven't yet been quantified and therefore weren't in the report. So as much as, as, um, the OPP billing is, we're not going to see that, that five percent increase. We will see a rise in, in, in the detachment board costs. And so the, the report really does lay out sort of the, again, the inflationary environment that we are still under, much, much like last year's report. Um, a- as I mentioned, we've got, uh, the parking issue to deal with, much like we did last year. Uh, which is why the, the recommendations were, were, were brought forward to council a- as they were. Uh, we also have the, uh, the Midland Bay Landing, uh, which is a report that we, we still need to, to deal with as well. Um, and as such, the report recommends we begin paying off that debt. Um, because right now that four and a half million dollars is being basically offset by our other reserves. And so if we continue to hold that property and we need those reserves to fund our long-term capital plan, we're going to run into a, a, a cash flow issue. So, um, if we began paying off that debt internally until we know what we're going to do with that property. Um, that would be my recommendation. Uh, however, if, uh, a decision were made in the coming months, that, that certainly could be avoided. So there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of, uh, items in the report that, as I said, decisions need to be made. And so depending on what that decision is, the outlook could change, right? And so the outlook of five to seven percent today, which you could argue arguably say that has gone down to five to six percent, given the OPP billing. Um, you know, could, could continue to, to fall, um, if, if those sort of tough decisions are made. So, uh, happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thank you, madam CFO, or, uh, sharing some information regarding the budget. Are there any questions from councillors? Councillor McDonald?
Thank you. I did submit my questions ahead of time and I did get a response to them. So I'm confused whether you want me to repeat them or we're okay to go. I'm, I'm satisfied with the response. Well, I'm not satisfied because we still didn't find any money, but do I repeat the questions or do we go? Is what I'm asking.
Okay, um.
Because I, I felt like I was chastised for in questions that, I don't know. What do you want me to do?
Well, just for clarity, if you had specific questions that were more of a priority, that'd be fine. But if you were happy with the answers, but it seems like you're not, you're not satisfied with get more information, but are there any specific areas that you need to address?
Not at this time. I just clarify, I wasn't happy with the answer. I was happy that I got the answer, but it wasn't the answer I wanted, sort of thing. If you know what I'm saying. We didn't find any money. Thank you.
And I think it's just a process that we have to go through. Uh, madam CFO, you had a.
Thank you, if I may, deputy mayor. Uh, councillor McDonald did, uh, did have, raised a good question around the, the support from Tiny. Uh, that is in the report and the, the mayor alluded to it earlier as well. Um, and so in the report, we are, um, speaking about the possibility, uh, which we have, you know, some certainty around. Um, that Tiny will no longer be contributing to the rec center um, for their, for their usage of that facility, uh, as well as the Midland Public Library. And so, um, my, my comment to councillor McDonald was that, um, that staff will come back with a report uh, at a later date, ho- hoping next council meeting. But again, we need some decisions to be made finalized from Tiny's perspective first. Um, on, on what, what the plan of action would be for that, because that would be, uh, a loss to both the municipality in our, in our general revenues as well as to the Midland Public Library, creating, um, some significant, uh, budget challenges. I thought that was worth pointing out. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. Any other questions from council? Oh, uh, councillor Meredith, do you have a question or you have your hand raised? I, I would see the other, the other hand.
Oh, sorry. Um, yes, I think, um, uh, we have to, uh, we have to ask these questions for, because the public is, is, is listening in. So although they have received, staff has received the questions, I think our duty is to ask those questions because they should have, they, they will have the answers. Um, so my, my question, uh, has to deal with, uh, one of them anyways. Uh, basically why is, uh, Tiny opted out of paying a hundred, a hundred thousand to the library and twenty-five thousand for their NSSRC? I just don't understand how, um, did, did staff had a conver- conversation with them or do they just call staff and say, hey, we're out and for what reason? Um, I didn't really get a reason, uh, in my response. So throwing it back to staff, I just find it mind boggling that they won't support any, basically zero goose eggs.
Sorry, it might be more fair if I answered this one because honestly, I'm the one who communicated this to staff. I, I was talking to the mayor of Tiny, uh, at county, reminding him that I have, we have yet to receive formal notification beyond, you know, being told to my face what's, what's coming. Uh, and so if that hasn't arrived yet, then, uh, you know, we'll have to reach out and just get them to finalize it. It was done in a open session of their last council meeting, I believe that's, we could all watch online, but uh, the bottom line is they are turning the tap off. They won't be subsidizing either Penetang Machine or Midland or Springwater, I believe, any longer, uh, for libraries and sports and rec services. So Penetang Machine's faced with a, a similar deficit. I don't think quite as large as ours, but um, it's just a position that their council has taken. I can't get into why I wasn't, didn't watch the meeting. But, uh, I advise staff and, uh, our, our library CEO, I think it was like ten thirty PM, you know, right after I learned of this. I, I communicated this to staff and staff have been basing their budgets based on what I've shared with them. I know this is accurate. I've confirmed it again at county with the mayor. But so the why is really up to them. Uh, we just are left to deal with the implications of this loss of subsidy. And, um, but so I just didn't want to put, paint staff in the corner because they'd only be parroting back what I shared with them verbally and, and in writing.
Thank you. I, I just find that odd that, you know, usually when you bow to something, it would be for, well, you know what, we're, we're, we're strapped. We, we can't afford to support Midland or something, but, uh, for them not to say anything at all, um, it's kind of odd. So anyways, I thought I'd ask that question. Next question, uh, staff has answered, but I will, uh, ask it for the public. Uh, has staff, uh, or will staff initiate any renegotiations with our EDCNS partners before 2024 budget deliberations?
Do I have a response from the CFO or?
Through you, deputy mayor, to councillor Meredith. Uh, so right now staff does not have any direction from council to, to initiate those negotiations.
Okay, thank you. And, um, next question. Uh, same type of question, uh, renegotiating, renegotiations with the Heroni Airport Triagreement before 2024 budget. Has staff initiated anything? I'm pretty sure I know the.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Uh, so currently our, our agreement, uh, that's approved by Transport Canada uh, does not allow for any negotiations. Uh, basically if we don't agree with their budget, we pay the same amount as last year. Um, we do own forty-nine point five percent of that. Um, I'm going to call it utility. That's not the right word, but, uh, and basically if we were to opt out at this point, we wouldn't get to participate in any, you know, future asset revenues. Um, or, and, uh, also any debt that's owed by the, the, the utility would be, we would, you know, have to cough up our share.
Thank you, madam CFO. Councillor Mary, is that, is that, um?
No, just a follow-up to that. Has there any, has there been, pardon?
Oh, no, I was going to say you have a follow-up, sorry.
Yeah, to follow up to that. Has there been any, um, activity on the, the real estate portion of the, um, the airport? We haven't got any updates on that in quite some time. Uh, I knew they had some, uh, uh, parties interested in, uh, acquiring real estate. Is there anything further with that? Just a yes or no, I guess.
Yes, uh, we have a staff member, yes.
We have our, it's run by the, the commission. There are council members on that commission. Uh, we'd have to ask them to, uh, if we want an update, we should request that they make a deputation to council.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, um, you already answered in the OPP services, so, um, I will, uh, withdraw that question. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I have councillor Ball and, uh, your worship, your worship, councillor Ball?
Thank you, deputy mayor. Uh, I'm just wondering for the EDCNS, uh, when we cut their budget, it was at the, I guess, we said that they would come back to us with a measurable, uh, showing that they had done the full value of their services in the past year before the budget year. So I thought that was, was the direction that we were following up. Can you speak to that?
Yes, do we have a staff member and CFO to respond? Sorry, yes, uh.
All these questions I can answer for you guys if you want. Um, so without like a formal request for a deputation, let me walk back to answering councillor Meredith's question about EDCNS and renegotiating for this year. EDCNS will be, in case you've forgotten, I sit on the board. Uh, you know, I was obviously quite skeptical as we all were about, uh, why we continue to fund this organization and what are they doing for us? And we're the, what's, you know, the KPIs and, um, so consequently, rather than saddling one of you, we're focused on that board. I put myself on it. So, uh, and I've been working with that board as they've been re-envisioning their, their raison d'etre, as it were. And they will be coming to councils, um, all format funding municipalities with a plan that you've probably seen an invite to, that's actually tomorrow night, uh, called the Innovation Hub. And, uh, I don't want to steal their thunder, but they will come and present to council uh, what their new sort of North Star is that they've hooked on to, uh, as well as with a funding ask to get this, uh, this project off the ground. And if you are interested at all in it, and I would encourage you to be interested in it because it is quite novel. Uh, you can sign up through the Chamber of Commerce, I think it is, for the kickoff tomorrow night at like five o'clock or something at Lake Lena Bay and Penetang Machine. And, uh, you get a little sneak peek of what it's all about. So they will be coming back to us with a funding request that sees us going back to our normal funding amount, which is based on a percentage of the levy. Okay, so we, we cut their knees off. I think we might even be my suggestion, uh, at the last budget because we didn't see the, the worth. And, uh, over the, you know, the course of the past 10 months, they've, I believe, come up with a plan, I should say, we've come up with a plan uh, that I think is worthy of them staying around and doing work for us. And they will be making that pitch to councils. So stay tuned, that's coming. Um, so that's the question about that. It's not really a renegotiating. It's, we decide whether we think that North Star and Vision that they've been doing collectively with their neighboring municipalities is worthwhile of us continuing to be part of. And if we are, we fund it. If we're not, we walk away. So airport, very similar update, the airport, uh, talking about the land sale, uh, since it was approved. There is a lot of work to do because right now there are no parcels of land to sell. We have to get through the entire planning process like we, like anybody would, who would subdivide land, whether it be aviation land or non-aviation land, and the airport has both. And we have to get that through to a, a process called our plan. And we need to have lawyers, we need to have surveyors, we need to have planners. I know it seems a bit odd that tiny township where the property exists has these people. But their position is they can't be the approval authority for the. But their position is they can't be the approval authority for the planning changes and zoning and all that stuff and also be the proponent. They can't wear both hats. I'm a little confused at that because they're going to do that when they rezone the land. They need to build their new municipal office on, but. That's still the position they've taken and they are struggling without a planner. It's all contract services right now. So the bottom line there is you can expect the normal funding requests coming from the airport. And we just lost our manager. We just got notifications. So we're struggling at the airport right now. But you'll see that plus you're going to see an additional request because it's going to be significant money to get through to our plan. So we can actually have subdivided sites that we can sell to the guy that is. Keenly interested in buying a plot of land to set up shop on. So you will see an increase request. I can't tell you what that is yet because we're still working on it, but just to forewarn you. It's won't be status quo because the the cost of planning and subdividing and all these things is not inconsequential, and the commission is a separate entity is responsible for that. And whatever it costs, the owners, Penetang, Midland and Tiny need to pay our our percentage share of. So that hopefully it answers your question at a high level on what's coming down the pipe from the airport. And E D C N S and again Thursday, Lake Leada Bay and Penetang Machine for the sort of the grand for the first reveal of this. This hub that, you know, is the North Star for E D C N S right now, or that's what's being proposed to councils. So hopefully I've added a bit of color. Staff's not really aware of this stuff yet. I am because I sit on these boards and so I I'm hopefully. Wet your appetite to some degree and and perhaps also raise some questions in your mind about what's to come in budget.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, for that update. I do have councillor Meredith and councillor Ball. Councillor Meredith, do you have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on when I when I was talking about renegotiating with E D C N S. I believe Midland pays more than the other three communities. So I was more so. Negotiating aspect of every that we pay equally, you know, all four municipalities. Pay equally there. So basically, whatever that amount is divided by four and because I believe we we do pay the most. So that's what I meant about renegotiating. Thank you.
You have a CFO respond to that?
Thank you Deputy Mayor through you to councillor Meredith. Yes, you are correct. We we do pay the most because the current agreement is based on. A percentage of our assessment and and tax levy, right? And so the current funding model is point seven five percent, I believe. Of the tax rate. And so we we have the highest assessment and the highest tax rate. So our 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 rate is the highest. If.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. You are you okay with that councillor Meredith's response? Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm okay with that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have constable.
Thank you. I just want to speak to the airport and when we are getting these additional requests for additional funding to parcel off the land and. Et cetera, et cetera. We will still not be the recipients of any profit from any of these sales, correct?
Your worship, you're going to respond to that?
That in a nutshell, yes, correct. There is no there is no path to profitability at the airport ever. From what we're being told, this is not something where we're going to see profit from where the funds will go for this capital sale of the of the property will go into. Operating and capital funds that the airport can use that in theory, and I would argue. Should reduce their ask of the funding partners because they now have their flesh with cash to some degree, and there's economic development happening. Will that economic development realistically turn into? You know, positive EBITDA where we're seeing our shares actually return, you know, money to our shareholders, AKA us. No. I'm I'd never peddle that fantasy. The consultants have been clear until there's passenger service there, which there's no plan for. There is no path to profitability, but it will help by reducing the. Draw on the three funding partners, of which were the majority. If they actually have money in the bank from having sold the lands. That's sort of. The position from the commission, and I see some heads nodding to make sure I'm not out to lunch, but that's that's my understanding of it.
Thank you, worship. Constable, a follow up?
Yes, thank you. So they have removed funding to the library and and to. The sports and rec center, but are going to re requesting money for doing something that they can do in house and have been doing in house with the municipal office. Is that what I'm hearing?
Worship.
The term they is a bit ambiguous in this case. Tiny being one of the partners. You know, funders, they have their position on what. How they would like to approach the planning matters for the for the land. And of course, any taxes that eventually get generated from these businesses. Don't get shared with us either. They stay in tiny because it's a tiny property. So. That's Tiny's position from a planning perspective, the corporate the commission's perspective is, you know, whatever it costs to move this forward and get to the point where we can actually. You know, wheel and deal and sell a parcel of land and make some money. There's a cost to make that happen because it wasn't already all set up and subdivided. And we didn't talk about that. You know, it's kind of maybe it was assumed, you know, but we never talked about the sort of ancillary costs of getting us to the point of a land sale. We all kind of agreed, hey, let's sell some land and get some money and get these guys to reduce their ask of us. But there is a cost to get us to that point. I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but you know, we've had to engage real estate folks. We are. You know, having to get planning lawyers, planners. And they're, you know, it's not cheap and we'll have to do that. And those costs will be cut based on the. Way it's that we're locked into this agreement unless we walk away from it. It'll be divided by the percentage ownership and it won't be, you know, up to us to say yes or no, we have to pay it. Kind of that remember that icky feeling about the snowplow? Well, enter that, you know, on a magnitude of. Much more to get through this other process because we own this asset and we are locked into it unless we walk away. And I believe the CFO and Mr Campbell has shared that if we walk away. Which, by the way, I know we talked about it this council, and I've been very open to the commission that this is likely a motion that will come before this budget. If we choose to choose to walk away, we basically have to pay our share of the debt. And that's the end of it. Now thankfully, there there isn't a ton of debt at the airport, but we'd be writing a check to walk away. But the net benefit to the taxpayer of Midland, we'd still be ahead of the game because what we'd have to pay would be less than what we'd have to pay as. Owners, to be fair, but that's a conversation we can have in more nauseating detail when and if that motion hits the floor. But that's about as much as I can share with you as a commissioner without speaking out of turn because I'm not the chair of the commission, but that's the public side of it. That you can expect to see at budget, and that is why you see some of these pressures applied to our budget right now.
Constable, I thought I saw your hand up. You okay? Fine, okay, good. Thank you. There any further questions regarding this item? If not, I want to read the motion again. See no. Questions I'm gonna oh, I'm I'm sorry.
Sorry, it was just last second. So again, just for people following along, this isn't we're not inking a deal that says everybody hold on for a five to seven percent tax increase. This is and I had the same conversation at county. This is just a ceiling that's giving staff direction or they're telling us based on what they know. This is what we're looking at, subject to the tough decisions we have, including we got to talk still about the A B Cs, right? The agencies, boards and commissions. So there's going to be a lot of work for us to do to try and get this number down to something we can all sleep at night with. But this is just staff telling us that here are the real economic pressures. So. This is not meant to be a fear monger or paint in the corner. This is just telling you this is the realities that we're facing. And where those sort of monsters are coming from that are popping out from under the bed.
Thank you for that clarity, your worship, because it it it's a starting base to understand that we have a percentage to work with. And there's real work to to bring it down. So I think that's a fair statement to make. I have councillor Meredith. Sounds like you have a. A question if you'd like to ask.
Just just one quick question. I've been trying to find it here, but I can't find it. But I think staff did. Say it was somewhere in this report, I believe it was this one, that. That council can could ask them to get to a certain percent. Of the budget and then they could strive to to get to that number versus. You know, we go into budget deliberations and just see where we end up, whether we end up at five, seven, you know, eight percent, whatever whatever it is, four percent. But if we can give them a target. I believe that was in here somewhere. But is that is that on the table in this? This reporter would would have to be a motion, I guess.
Are you directing a question to the staff or?
To the staff. Yeah, to the staff. Sorry, I'm not sure who to answer. Maybe the CFO would answer that. I'm not sure.
I'll ask our CFO to respond. Madam CFO.
Thank you Deputy Mayor through you to councillor Meredith. Yeah, so if you were to give staff a target, it would require an amendment to tonight's motion. Again, this report is just being received for information. So that is in the option alternatives that you certainly have that that right to to give staff a target. I can tell you that right now we are in the middle of our budget deliberations discussions amongst staff, and so we are doing that very. Deep dive detailed line by line review, and we are looking for those cost savings, those efficiencies. And some of those recommendations you you've seen tonight, right? So, you know, we are doing that detailed work to to hope. With our goal of arriving at a budget that 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 council will approve, right? And so, you know, my. My recommendation would not be to to for council to provide that target. But again, certainly certainly an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up again councillor Meredith? No. Have to put your speaker on.
Sorry, no, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no pressing questions, I'm going to read the motion. Yes, okay, I got it. Your worship.
Sorry, we have the the library C C O with us tonight, and I don't want your trip to be here for a waste. And there, you know, we've already kind of talked about. We don't know why this change has been coming from Tiny, but I would really like to hear from you about, you know, what your what this is impacting on your budget. Because we're that's not part of this five to seven thing, right? A B Cs are plus. So and you're you're one of the A B Cs, an important one. But I'd like to hear from you on what this impact looks like and what kind of brainstorming your board is doing on how to make up for these losses and what your plan is with our reciprocal agreement, for example, Penetang Machine, who also funds us. But no fear, folks, I. You know, Mayor Ross and I have talked at length about our shared service delivery, and. There's nothing I've heard of that's signaling any loss in funding from Penetang Machine or that reciprocal range that we have between our libraries, but. Please, I'd like like to hear from the library on this one because it's so important to our communities.
So it definitely has an impact to our bottom line, and we are concerned about it, but I am waiting to hear back from Tiny. My request has been what are they going to do to help their community have library services? So one of the things sometimes previous to this agreement where we get a an annual amount. We would send them lists of people that had received a card and we get reimbursed for it on a per person charge that we have. So if someone's out of. Town and we don't have reciprocal borrowing agreement like we do with Penetang Machine, we have a charge of a hundred and fifty dollars a household. So I was asking them what is happening along those lines and what their plans were and if they had any. We haven't gotten a response back. So right now we're sitting in a very much a holding pattern to hear what that response is to understand what we would do. Would we get a hundred percent of the residents who currently use us from Tiny? If they have to pay and be reimbursed, I don't think so. We'd have to look at the rest of that and look at lower numbers and come up with an estimate. But until we hear from Tiny what's happening, I I don't have an answer yet, and we can't come with a firm recommendation.
Also, Paul.
Thank you. I just had a question for your drop in events, the events that aren't required for a library card that you're not checking for library cards. How are are you going to monitor that?
So in fact, a lot of our events do require you to have a library card. And again, we've had the luxury of not having to check for that, but a lot of these things could be changing as we move forward if we're having problems with funding. So. Again, we only got confirmation two days ago, so we're not in a position from my board or again, without the full information from Tiny about how we're going to go ahead with this. But we're monitoring it and we are brainstorming and coming up with ideas. We are lucky that we already do have a process in place, though, that if we don't have reciprocal for you, it is a hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. That's unfortunate that you're going to have to start checking. I know that it's a super inclusive space and you try to make it as welcoming as possible, and. I think that's probably the exact opposite of your model. So I'm sorry that you have to even start doing that, and I appreciate the fact that you already. Have been in contact with them and trying to find the lost revenue in another way. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Because I'm ready to read the motion. Okay, thank you. I will read the motion one more time. That staff report C S R twenty twenty three dash seventy six. Twenty twenty four budget outlook dated September twenty seven twenty twenty three be received for information. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? That's carried. We are now. On the last item of the consent agenda. And I believe what I'm going to read is probably taking a novel war and peace. So it's quite lengthy. The staff report C S R. Dash twenty twenty three dash seventy seven financial report. As at July thirty first twenty twenty three dated September twenty seven twenty twenty three be received and. That the twenty twenty three operating grant to the library library be increased. By twenty eight thousand three hundred sixty three to cover the budget shortfall resulting from the updated. Insurance premium allocation calculation in that a budget of fifty thousand dollars per library. Equipment purchases be approved funded from the library's equipment and automation reserve and that a budget. Of a hundred and fifteen thousand for resurfing resurfacing Marshall Road be approved to be funded from. The anticipated twenty twenty three operating surplus and or the roads capital reserve. And that the Tiffin Park in Pete Peterson Park. Ballfield budgets be combined and staff proceed with completing the required work at Pete Peterson's Park. And that a portion of the park's ground improvements. Continency budget be allocated to the Pete Peterson Park waterline replacement project and. That the anticipated overage in the general resurfing surfacing program of. Two hundred thousand be funded from the Ontario Communities Infrastructure Fund Reserve. I read the motion, but I need a mover. Councillor Ball. And the secondar. Constable East. So there are five items that was listed. I'm going to open this up for any questions regarding this report or this motion. For staff. Councillors, we have any questions? Yep, sorry. Madam CFO, thanks for waving your hand. My eyes were looking the other way. Madam CFO.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. No, I just wanted to make a comment on number one because I do realize we put an amendment to that motion. On the on the floor today, and so that is actually why our library C O is here tonight. And so we added that a fifty thousand dollar. Budget be added to this year's budget for equipment. And that would be funded from the library's equipment and automation reserve. And so on Thursday night's. Board meeting that was approved by the library, the Midland Public Library Board, and so they are in support of that. Because the town manages the library's reserves, this is why we're here in front of you tonight. So. There is money in the reserve to fund these these equipment expenditures and, you know, the both the C E O and the board feel that. You know, waiting waiting until February when our twenty twenty four budget is is adopted or hopefully adopted is is not an option. So. If you have any questions on that, Tricia would be here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CFO, for that for that clarity update. I have councillor Meredith. Sir, you have a question?
Can I can I ask my question?
Yes, constable.
Okay, thank you. So how would the library have a shortfall of twenty eight thousand three sixty three on its? So how would the library have a shortfall of 28,363 on its insurance premium? If if this was quoted in the library's annual budget? That was my question.
Madam CFO, you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Councilor Meredith. Short shortfall isn't isn't really the right term because I don't want to give the impression that there is a deficit in the library. The the library budgeted the appropriate amount for insurance. Actually, we we budget that amount for them on their behalf, right? We also budget their their salaries and benefits. And when we were looking at the allocation of that bill, so you heard a little bit earlier tonight about general liability, right, and how it is really this big umbrella policy? Well, we need to find a way to distribute those costs. And so over time, you know, departments have changed, the policy has expanded. When when we kind of dove in, we realized that allocation need to be updated, needed to be updated. And so when we did that, the library got a larger share when you factor in also their building insurance and their general liability than they had in the past. The current allocation, the the allocation method that we're using, we feel is more correct. And and that's why we did it this year, because when we go to do our 24 budget, it means that going forward, we're recording the costs where they belong. What it means is that this year, the budget, the the library now has, and I will use the word shortfall, but it's 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 really because we owe them that money, right? We've taken it out of out of ours costs and we put it into theirs. Overall, insurance is actually under budget this year. So there's no, there's no loss in from anybody. It's just, it's 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 actually taking the money and just taking it from from our bucket and putting it into theirs. So that they don't have to cut their expenses by $28,000 because that's what they would need to do if if we didn't give them this additional money. So just trying to be transparent about changes before before we make them. And it's it's really not, it's it's a it's a sort of a paper exercise, really, is how I would describe it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CFO.
So.
Counselor Meredith.
Yeah. So here we are, we're we're shifting money because of, not a shortfall, but because the library's insurance is is higher than than expected because of adjustments. And we're, this is, this is what we're going to be faced with during budget deliberations, right? Tough decisions. So I know you say the money's there, but that money can be used elsewhere. So I mean, if they have to find the money, in my eyes, if they want to, if we want to be, you know, try to get things under control here, there's $28,000 we could use elsewhere or put it in a reserve. So when 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 you're operating, there's there's tough, tough decisions that we have to make. There's tough decisions that the people running, you know, with management of of the library have have to make. So I I I won't be in support of support of this. I I think you have to find find the 28,000 somewhere within your your current budget and going forward. Because these are the decisions that we're going to have to make coming in January. And we may as well start, start, start making them now. Because if we're facing a 7% hike, that I've never, even when I signed up to be a counselor, I would never fathom a 7% tax hike. So these are decisions that we have to make, and I'm and I'm I'm bound to make them. And then we're just just going to have to find and scrimp and 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 make tough decisions on the management side to operate this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Counselor Meredith, is there a follow up from CFO? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, when we do our 2024 budget for insurance, our budget would be the $28,000 less and the libraries would be the $28,000 more. So there is, it is a wash between the two, right? So that wouldn't be an increase to anybody's overall, right? Thank you.
I understand that. But if we vote this down, we have 20 more, 28 more thousand in the bank, and it's not a wash. So we're 28,000 to the good.
In the sense that our municipal budget would be, would have, would have a surplus because we transferred costs to the library? Yes. I would argue that that's not fair, given we do their insurance budget.
This this whole thing's not fair. These are the decisions we have to make. So there's nothing, there's nothing good about this. And and come January, there'll be nothing good when we have to make these tough decisions. So I don't feel good about it, but they have to be made.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. Are there any further questions? I have Counselor McDonald and Counselor Ball out. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. I understand the library insurance, we're just moving it from one file to the other, sort of thing. But my question is, I'm almost afraid to ask it, but the the, is it 50,000 for purchasing of equipment requests from your reserve or from that we handle for you? Can I ask what the equipment's for and why it can't wait?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, so we are very delayed in purchasing computer equipment. When I started, we didn't have a plan for renewal of our computer equipment. And I was very, very concerned, first of all, that we had a physical server. And I really wanted to fix that because if that went down, the whole library went down. We just found out this year that the county will be moving us to cloud, so we don't have to use those reserves for that. But in fact, our staff computers that we, all the full time staff work on are nine years old. One has failed, so we're actually using a library loaner for a senior staff member. And we currently can't use any of the computers when we do when we do board meetings or anything like that because they fail. So we're starting to use our personal computer. So we think we're at a critical point right now where staff are actually being impeded from their work. I even have trouble searching certain drives and have to turn off my computer and restart it again. So I think we're wasting staff time with those items. And so there's, there's nine full time staff computers that are around nine years old. We also have two self checkouts. We had three. One has physically failed and no longer works. We have two that when we turn them on in the morning, and I quote the staff, they say it's like an airplane turning on, they're so loud. And again, these are used to help patrons self checkout. And so if the patrons can't self check out, the staff are wasting valuable time and resources when they could be doing higher level work by doing that. So they're almost at the point of failure. The third thing that we're looking at buying is a MakerPlace computer. So last year, the library invested in a new laser cutter. It works very slow without it. We also got a wonderful grant for a three, a 3D scanner, a handheld one. This is very exciting for community members working in the MakerPlace. It's handheld, so if somebody needs to create a part for a working machine that they're doing or something, you can use the handheld scanner and it'll help you reproduce it with a 3D printer. Also, too, to advance things for teenagers who are working on video games and that. Now you can do, put faces into video games when you're programming. It was a wonderful grant to receive, but the computer in the MakerPlace is actually a cast off from the county. So it starts at about six years old and actually can't function with the equipment that we got the grant for. So to optimize the items that we have there now and to actually use the items that we received through grant funding, we need to upgrade the computer.
Thank you very much. That sounded more like more than $50,000. Very ambitious.
Well, actually, we got a lot of quotes. I'd like to thank the county. The county's put us on their plan and allowed us to get the discounts with them. So we're quite thrilled with that.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Ball?
Thank you. I just want to speak to the insurance premium. I think it's unfair to ask the library to absorb that cost. They're one of the only organizations that provide like daily programming to our residents. I think that's, that's unfair to ask them all of a sudden to absorb a $30,000, $28,000 cost. Also, they provide security downtown, which you yourself have put forward a new position to pay for security downtown. They're already doing that. So I think that that's saving us money, actually having that person in the library being able to monitor what's happening downtown for our safety. So I think that's, it's completely unfair to suggest that we ask them to absorb this cost just because we reallocated our budget. It doesn't put our overall budget any higher.
Thank you, Counselor Ball. Anybody from staff want to respond to that? Or or that's just a comment? Yes, your worship.
Maybe just before I comment, we need to quickly break and do this motion to go past 10 o'clock. Do you want to do that? And then I'll I'll chime in?
Move, I need a mover and a second on this. Moved by Counsel Post. Second by Mayor Gordon. I will read the motion that that pursuant to section 9.2C of procedural bylaw 2022 dash 2, council agrees to remain in session past 10:00 PM in order to deal with the remaining items included on the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. We will continue with the item. Are there any further questions? Yes, Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I just, I'm just, I'm heartened to hear us starting to put as critical eye because none of us are going to be happy with a 5% to 7% tax increase. Like I said, this doesn't even include the ABC asks. So you haven't seen the airport? You still haven't seen the library? You know, like, there's stuff coming that, that, you know, the Hymn Museum, all the things that we support every year. So I think the the thing we need to remember is we got to stop doing things that are losing us money. If we're not prepared to make money, then we got to stop doing what we're losing money on and at least break even. So that's going to be a recurring theme that we're going to hear at this table as we parse the budget and we listen to staff recommendations for things like non resident fees and user fees. And all of this stuff's going to come our way. Anytime we come across a report, like the one we deferred tonight, or we changed about, we're losing money in the bar business. Well, we can't sit there and, you know, tell the library, well, too bad, tell the kids they can't have new computers and you got to run the old 10 year old beater and then still try and run a nonprofitable bar business. So we need to stop losing money. And that's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is we need to start making money because we can't run this organization on a cost recovery basis. We're not putting any money into the reserves. We're not paying off our debt. We're not servicing anything. We actually need to make profit. This is a business, right? Providing service to the the residents of town. So keep this in context. And I'm not chastising anybody for the nitpicking tonight on on these budgetary things. But remember, we got to stop losing money and we need to find ways to make money. We can't have it both ways, right? So keep this critical thinking going as you parse these reports and you hear these things and start thinking about ways we can stop losing money, at least break even in some areas. And, you know, really, we need to make profit. We are a for profit enterprise. And you are the board of directors for that enterprise. So I'm glad to hear the conversation about this. I don't have a lot to add on this particular one. You know, this transactional thing, switching between budgets to me is just, it's just housekeeping. But we got to start thinking critically like this, and I'm I'm happy to hear the conversation and the tough questions. Because we are going to have a lot of these. We need to start turning this into a profit, a profit center rather than a cost center for most of the things we do. And some things that are public good, we're never going to make profit on, like the bus, the library, right? There's things we're never going to turn a profit on, Sports and Rec Center. You know, we just got to stop the bleeding and stop losing as much money. So we need to focus on things where we actually can break even or even better, make money. So those are the tough decisions we're going to have. So I'm just, I want to praise council for tonight, for I know we've been going on a long time, lots of tough questions about finance. That's what you're elected to do. But keep in context that we got to stop losing money. We're not subsidizing our neighbors. We're not subsidizing anybody for things that aren't greater good items. If you're not a Midland taxpayer, you're paying more. That's going to be my stance for the next three months. We're not a charity. So we got to look after our residents and their pocketbooks. So thanks, staff, for this report. And I'm not, I'm not looking forward to the draft budget, but I also am because it's an opportunity. Think we can finally wrap our minds around things that we didn't, we danced around in previous terms, like, eh, we don't want to offend anybody and don't want to charge more for people that don't live here. Well, guess what? The chickens came home to roost. And it's time to have the conversation and the stuff we're learning about tonight and these pressures are the catalyst for that conversation. Not pleasant, but it's business. This is business.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. And I think that basically, we may have to reread the municipal act and understand the roles and responsibilities of what the municipal act says for municipalities. We're moving now for a cost recovery for municipalities. I have Counselor Meredith, who's been waiting in the wings there. Counselor Meredith, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Just a a comment to Counselor Ball's comment before that, that the downtown gets security, which the downtown doesn't get security, the library gets security. But there's, there's, there's no part of that security that the downtown gets. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think we did speak about security in the downtown core, and we can't do that legally, OPP issue and so forth. So I just want to make sure of that. And and my stance on Bill Gordon's comments that, yeah, I mean, let's take care of Midland, but at the same time, this is a business, like you said. And when when you don't have money in the bank, you you got to cut. So and this is one of the areas that you're asking for money. This could be $28,000, you know? That that we put in our pockets for something else coming in in the budget. We need room, wiggle room. And this is an opportunity. And as much as I hate, I hate to do it, it's an opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. If there are no further questions? You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed?
Sorry, can I get a recorder vote? I was on mute.
I'm sorry, where's that, Counselor Meredith?
Can I get a recorded vote, please?
Are you?
Yeah, I was on mute.
Record a vote? Just thank you, Counselor Meredith. You got that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of council. You've heard the question. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Counselor Post?
Yes.
Counselor Meredith?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Ball?
Yes.
Counselor East?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cotton?
Yes.
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Bald?
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon?
Yes.
The motion is carried eight to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the consent agenda items that were withdrawn. We are now under number 18 notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion from counselors this evening?
Okay, I didn't actually submit a notice of motion, and I was just looking through my email because I did in the spring. And I pulled it back. It was regarding the airport. I had pulled it back and waited out time for a sale. And I can't find it in my email, but I know I sent it to Andy and to Sherry. And I'd like to put that notice of motion on the floor tonight. Please, I'm going to keep looking as well.
Through you, if you could just in general say what it was about the airport, and then we can wordsmith it for the next next meeting.
Well, I think we should walk away while we can because I think the debt that we are going to have to pay out is going to get bigger and bigger from what I'm gathering this evening. I think our best bet is to walk away. We're never going to make any money, and it's costing the taxpayers huge.
Yeah, we're not here to debate the notice of motion, but it will work with you to, you know, crack that up for the next meeting.
That's okay. I mean, even without reading it on. That's okay. I mean, even without reading it on tonight, you have two weeks to craft it in writing with consultation with staff and submit it and it'll be on the next agenda. So. Written honestly, the formality of reading and a notice of motion at a council meeting, I call it political theater, like not in a flippant way. It's more just to tell people that something's coming, but it's no big deal. You just put it in by email and it'll be on the next agenda and we'll debate it then.
Thank you. Uh. We have that recorded from Council Post. Then are there any other notices of motion?
Count councillor Meredith, uh, there's something drafted here that I have on my desk that I, you know, we were talking about earlier. Um, if you wanted to revisit it, it would require. Um, you know, some gymnastics here to get around if we want to do the uh. To discuss it tonight. Are you still interested in pursuing that? I believe you're in you're in receipt of that draft. I just didn't want you to forget about this unless you're not intending to pursue it right now.
Council Meredith.
You're on mute.
It's late. It's only five in the morning here, so um. That was the uh. This is the problem I have going past ten o'clock.
It was a request to reconsider um a decision that we made at the last council meeting in order to reconsider we.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Set aside the rules of procedure and then we have to reconsideration.
That's important, yes. Um. See how tired I am. This is what happened last meeting, but yes, um, let me see where I am. Uh, motion to reconsider um um four point two and twenty-five point one. Of our last uh closed meeting uh regarding with the non-union staff relations. Um. That's the one I wanted to uh. Motion for reconsideration uh to bring it back to the table to discuss it. Uh, do I do I? Am I not to talk about why I want to do this or?
Not yet. So in order to for us to re first of all, to deal with this tonight, we have to set aside our rule of procedure. And Madam Clerk is hobbling over to me. Doing her best. Perfect. So there there's a motion that I'll have to uh. Read in and that will need a. Majority or is it two-thirds, Madam Clerk? It's all the same thing anyway, but. For. Rule of procedure, changing procedure, two-thirds. Yeah, okay, so. In order to just drop a motion on the table and have council deal with it right now without the requisite public notice that's one week. Um, we can override and we have done, I think, once, maybe twice this term. And deal with that now. And the reason why it would make sense to if we're going to do this. Now is because it will have budgetary impacts and staff are in the middle of trying to draft a budget. So if we kick this down normal procedure to three weeks from now. We've now hobbled the staff's ability to continue on with the budget process. So that being said, uh. You'd like this tabled, so I'm going to read in a a motion moved by councillor Meredith. I need a secondary. To debate whether or not we buy, you know, set aside our rule of procedures. So council post. The council waive the rules of procedure to allow for a new motion. I'll fix the typo. It's a new moton. Uh, to be considered and discussed. It is late. I know. I'm not. I'm just kidding with you, Madam Clerk. Uh, to be considered and discussed under section twenty-two motions for which notice was given. Uh, which is going to be later in the agenda, which is my part of it when I get to go again. So. The rationale for doing this and setting aside rules or procedures so we can debate this motion that you haven't heard yet. Which I think in fairness, I should probably read you that motion so you know what it is where I'm asking you to or councillor Meredith is asking to uh set aside, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Um, council does have to waive the procedures. Um, for a notice or a notice of motion to reconsider. However, because the motion to reconsider is considering a. An item that was discussed and closed. You'll see when the motion is read when we get to section twenty-two. It's that. The matter be reconsidered either on October eighteenth or prior to during a special meeting of council because there are budget implications with re. Revisiting this item. So you really can't have discussions about it because it was a closed session item, but it will be brought back to closed session.
Not tonight.
Right. And we don't have another regular council meeting until. After we would be contemplating this closed session. Special council meeting. So. That's the extenuating circumstances. So the motion that you're going to be asked to uh reconsider is the council reconsider item four point two and twenty-five point one. Non-union staff labor relations as discussed in closed session at its regular meeting of council with closed session on September sixth, twenty twenty-three, and that. The matter be placed on the next regular meeting of council scheduled for Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, or a special meeting of council to be scheduled with the call of the chair. And that's that's where we're going because the sooner the better. So the motion for reconsideration is a council wave the rules of procedure to allow for a new motion, but when I just read you, to be considered and discussed under section twenty-two motions for which notice was given. Any discussion around a setting aside a rule of procedure so we can do. Trigger that. Tonight, later in the agenda. Are we clear on? I'm trying to make this as clear as possible. It is a bit convoluted. Is everyone clear on what I'm asking you to vote on right now? To set aside the rules of procedure so we can put this on the agenda tonight at motions for which notice was given because it didn't wasn't given. Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Hands up if you're in favor. All those opposed? Okay, that is carried. So this other motion we'll talk about later in the agenda. Thank you, council. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Are there a- any further? Uh, motions, notices of motion this evening. Seeing none. Thank you very much for those notices of motion and the changes. We are now. Under number nineteen of general announcements. Are there any announcements from councillors? This evening? Would you like to share? Council begun.
I very briefly, the symposium is going to happen. There's another planning meeting on Friday. I understand the panel has been invited. And October nineteenth. Hopefully it'll be a great day. Of accomplishments. And I'm happy to say also the Act of Transportation. First meeting is called for October the seventeenth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council McDonald. Yes, I have. Uh, his worship.
Thanks. Just a quickie. Act of Transportation County uh was unanimous in their support for allowing Midland to participate when the county structured a sorry. A not a transportation accessibility committee. This was something we uh put passed the last time and I just wanted to announce that. County was, you know, welcomed us with open arms, so we're going to have participation in in the accessibility committee, which would we have been unable to attract enough people for form. So. That's a win and thank you to my peers at county for the support. The next one I I spoke to briefly at another. Uh, another, well, when we were talking about the reports, Economic Development Corporation is hosting. Their sort of sneak peek of the innovation hub, which is the new North Star that E D C N S is, uh, you know. Navigating towards and looking for the support of the four funding municipalities. They're having kind of a mixer warm-up event so you can understand more about it. And uh, it's happening tomorrow from five until seven P M at Lake Clay Bay in Penetang Washi. Uh, so September twenty-eighth, five to seven, I would strongly encourage anybody in a small business or who is entrepreneurial. Uh, even our council folks because they'll be asked to help fund this. And I didn't tell you this earlier, but it'll be a three-year budget ask because you can't spin up something new like this and come dancing for dinner every year. Uh, so please avail yourself of this opportunity to get a sneak peek of it before they come to council. That's tomorrow at Lake Clay Bay.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I have councillor Ball.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that Mayor Gordon, myself and CEO attended the Berry Safety Meeting. Um, it's similar to what our symposium will be like. So I think that was. An eye-opening experience uh. About how to involve community partners and look at um pre like already run initiatives. So I think that was. Very helpful going into uh the symposium that um. Counselor McDonald did mention and it is from six to nine. Is is that correct? Six to nine on October nineteenth? Okay, so six to nine on October nineteenth. I just wanted to throw the time out there for everybody as well. For the public session, correct? Yes. Um, and I also wanted to say the youth council is still looking for applications. The graphics should be coming out, so uh. Agencies involving youth will have those up as well, but if you have a uh. Youth that wants to participate in having their voice heard in Midland, that council uh committee is still open and looking for applicants.
Thank you, councillor Ball for that. Any further? General announcements under councillors. Seeing none. Thank you very much. We are now on the last item. Uh, item twenty. Motion to close committee of the whole and to resume formal council. Session. I have a mover, Bill, councillor Meredith. Uh, I have a secondary councillor East. That's a committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Thank you much, Deputy Mayor. So I've got a move motion moved by councillor Bald, seconded by councillor Ball. That the recommendations of the committee of a hole for the meeting of September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. All right. Up next, motions for which notice was given. Well, we might as well start with the Johnny come lately one. Councillor Meredith, I need a secondary for this motion. Uh, we have. Councillor East. And I'll read it again. The council reconsider item four point two. And twenty-five point one non-union staff labor relations is discussed in closed session at its regular meeting of council with closed session on September sixth, twenty twenty-three. And that the matter be placed on the next regular meeting of council scheduled for Wednesday, October eighteenth, or as we're all suggesting. Special meeting of council to be scheduled with the call of a chair, which will be soon. And since we can't discuss uh the guts of this as to why you're doing it, councillor Meredith, because we got to do that in camera. Um, this is a pretty easy one. We just call the question. So all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. So I will coordinate with the clerks and we'll get a special council meeting and we'll do a Zoom if you if it's okay with you guys. And we'll pull this off ASAP. Next, we have twenty-two point. One moved by councillor McDonald. And he needs a seconder. For this motion and the motion is seconded by councillor Post. That staff provide a list of current bylaws to council and that if deemed necessary. An ad hoc committee be established to review the list and prioritize those that require attention. Take it away, councillor McDonald.
Well, not entering a political theater. I just think it's something that should be done. Um, and I I I appreciate the bylaws that have been coming to us being reviewed and amended. But I I would. Hope that we can. Have a list of what. And have a chance to talk about what's coming up next. Prioritize the ones that. Staff feels needs to be immediately given attention and that we feel could use some attention.
Mr. Ferguson, would you like to comment on this?
Uh, through your worship, uh, that's definitely something staff can do. Uh, as I've indicated, this is something that. Manager of uh of bylaw enforcement myself have been talking about. Is to go through all of the existing bylaws, regardless if they're new or old, figure out which ones are are being difficult to enforce. Um, and which ones need to be updated. So uh, I can definitely sit down with him and uh go through the bylaws. And maybe prioritize maybe ten that we feel uh should be added on and and targeted to have completed by the end of uh. And by the end of twenty twenty-four. And if we're done them before that, then uh then we can look to add some additional ones, but we can bring forward that list to council. And then council then can give us direction on which bylaws, if there's ones that aren't listed there or if there were ones bumped up. Uh, then we can take that direction from council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commentary before we call the question? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Two opposed, okay. That is carried. Next, move by councillor McDonald seconded by. Councillor East. The council review the consent agenda format and the council meeting schedule to include meetings in July and August. Take it away, councillor McDonald.
I think it speaks for itself, the last two meetings we've had. Um, we're not as productive as what we could be if we had more frequent meetings, in my opinion. So I I think it's worthy of a discussion. And hopefully. My fellow councillors will feel and the mayor and deputy mayor feel the same.
Perhaps I could ask that when you say the council review the consent agenda and format. What is the mechanism of this review? That you have in mind?
Well, if it's on an agenda item, or maybe we can. Um, call a another training session. Um, I'm learning as I go along, but. I I remember. Giving the procedure bylaws uh at our orientation. And having. Presentation given to us, but I'm sure it just all went over our heads. Well. Specifically, it went over my head. So I. The agenda, not just I'm I'm learning more about the consent agenda, but I don't know who puts the stuff on. Why is it all piled on one meeting? That we're. So long, like. It makes me feel. That we're missing. The opportunity to be more thorough and efficient. By having so much on one agenda. And uh. I'm hoping that this. Notice of motion will give us the opportunity to discuss it and possibly explore different avenues to become more efficient in our meetings. And definitely meet in July and August.
Okay, Madam C E O.
Sure, it's through it's through your worship to uh councillor McDonald. So the consent agenda is um is in place actually to make things more efficient. So. Having come from an organization that actually did not have a consent agenda, it means everything goes to. Council for discussion and debate and a consent agenda, especially for information for items that are for information only. It's a great way to get them to a council meeting. It is so a consent agenda or not having a consent agenda will not take away from the amount of reports and information that you get. It just um, it it just offers the ability to streamline the meeting to actually to to tell staff. Um, when they need to be at meetings and when they don't, because if if nothing is on a consent agenda. Then everyone has to come to every meeting to assume that there may be questions. So that's sort of the reasoning why you want to consider why consent agenda is in place to streamline the process. Um, to your question about things coming, like a lot of things coming on a meeting. It is it is due to just timing of things. So coming up to budget, we're trying to get a bunch of things. You know, or things in place to try to prep us for a budget and or there's a lot of times where there'll be planning things that come. So. What goes on the consent agenda is is staff led on things that are coming up and things that we feel should come to council.
Supplementary.
As I mentioned, I'm I'm getting more comfortable with the consent agenda format. But. Why wouldn't we call us an a second meeting instead of giving us ten reports? Who makes that call to say we're going to have one meeting tonight and then a special meeting? In a week and a half or or another council, special council meeting. I have to look at the bylaws, I guess, to see what the guidelines are there. That's where I'm hoping for the discussion, how to make us more ef. Effective and efficient. If council doesn't want to discuss it, well, then. That's fine by me. I'm a big girl. I can accept that.
Sorry, through your worship to councillor McDonald. Um. Yeah, the the decision on when the meetings happen is part of um. Uh, it would have been a council decision and part of the procedural bylaw that exists. So your question on procedural bylaw. My, I I normally have seen the procedural bylaw only modified once in in a term of council. That's usually the rule of thumb from. You know, the AM C T O and other um things. If there is a wish of council to review the the procedural bylaw. That is, that is an option. I would um. You know, I like I said, having lived um without a consent agenda and having had meetings go past midnight and then have to continue on the next day. I was so thrilled. and then have to continue on the next day, I was so thrilled to see that we had a consent agenda here. But, but the, the items, you know, there is always the opportunity and during the summer months, you'd ask that question as well. During summer months or during heavy times of meetings, there is always the opportunity for the chair to, to call other meetings and get the consensus of council.
Counsel Prost and then Counselor Meredith.
Just a suggestion, if we had meetings like we did last term, like the first and third Wednesday, was it? It was every two weeks. It seemed to reduce the time we might spend in chambers, but it didn't, it, it wasn't for sure. If we had a lot to talk about, regardless of how big or small the agenda was or, or the consent agenda, we could still be here till like eleven thirty. It, it really just depends on, on the evening and what's going on. But if we had meetings a little more often every two weeks instead of three, that would probably reduce time. And I think probably what Counselor McDonald's thinking is when you're in a meeting for seven hours, how good are you at the end of it, right? And that's a reality for all of us. You guys worked all day too. It's just a suggestion that if we were to change anything, and I don't know if it's even possible, going back to the first and third Wednesday could eliminate meetings going extremely late every time.
Counselor Meredith.
Let just comment on that. The, at the end of the newspaper articles in the mirror, it always says, and Midland Council's the first and third Wednesday of the month, still says that. And I'm going, I don't think so. It's every third week. Just a point.
Counsel Meredith.
Thank you, yeah. Um, I, I'm I'm in, in agreeance now with, now with changing the structure of, of the the agenda, I'm more in agreeance with maybe having one meeting and, at least a meeting in July and a meeting in August. So a report like we just had today, we could tackle some of the bigger issues back then, and then we wouldn't be here, like one past ten o'clock, when people are up at seven, six thirty in the morning, they're full time jobs and they come to this and, and you, you, you're starting to, you know, fade away. So, and, and that's my concern with not, with, with having the summer off for those two months. If we can, if staff feels that, you know, there, there is a, a boatload of of stuff coming down the pipe that they know of, they can possibly, you know, talk to the mayor and he can hold a special meeting at council. So that's all my suggestion is. Thank you.
Thanks, and just quickly to Madam Clerk and then to Counselor Ball.
Thank you, your worship, to Counselor Meredith. This was probably one of the first summers that we didn't have a council meeting. And typically what we do is when we set the schedule at the beginning of the year, we always schedule Ja- July and August at the call of the chair. And if something important were to come up that we had to meet, we could also assess the situation and perhaps have a a special meeting of council, which we've done in the past. Typically, there are planning matters that are, that have legislative requirements and deadlines. But it's not very often that we don't have any meetings in July and August. We do set one meeting per month just for the summer, and that's been something that's been done as long as I've been here. And then it's always at the call of the chair, the mayor, and to work with staff. And the, the meetings that we're having now, that we have ten reports, maybe these items weren't brought forward in July and August because the, we hadn't thought about it, or it didn't have to come up in July or August, came up as a result of budget. It's just timing. And as you all know, our procedure bylaw is fairly new. We drafted it in twenty twenty two. We did have an orientation on it at your council orientation. And part of the changing of the meetings to every three weeks was because council had fatigue, staff had a lot of overtime, we were constantly in prepping for council, attending council, prepping for council, and there wasn't a lot of time to adjust in between council meetings. So that's why the change was made back in, I, I believe it was actually in twenty eighteen before the twenty twenty two bylaw. And that's it.
Yeah, that's right, it happened just before twenty eighteen, because the last official act of that previous council was to enact the new procedure policy that, you know, Counselor Downer, he, he's probably got the most experience because he's lived the old style where nothing was on consent and every meeting was like this one, surrounded with our high paid staff, sitting here until eleven o'clock. This is costing us money, people. So I mean, if you just want to ask staff a question, you need to pull a report and they're sitting in their seat here. We're burning cash. So I think that the whole reason why we have this consent agenda is we're mimicking county. And you think our reports are long and there's lots of stuff, wait till you look at the upper tier. And this consent agenda format works beautifully with thirty two counselors, sixteen municipalities and reports that would make your head spin. But the onus is on the elected official to come prepared to these meetings. So that's what the difference is. Before we had the old style that Counselor Downer would have been familiar with and I watched as an outsider, every single report was like tonight, where you had to make the staff present what the report was. Counselors didn't even have to read or come prepared, and you could tell they didn't because they're asking questions that are answered on the executive summary on the first page. And there, there would be no preparation. And questions that are so simply answered ahead of time weren't being answered or were, were being asked at these meetings. So the consent agenda published a week ahead of time, because it used to just be you get it Friday and you're meeting on Monday, because the meetings are Monday, puts the onus on us to read these things and come prepared to debate them at the meetings. Not to hijack the meeting with silly questions that could have been answered in a quick email, not to have our most expensive staff sitting around the table here, answering mundane questions that again could have been answered in a quick email. There's a time and a place to pull reports and there's, as I say, the political theater, I'm not, you know, I use that, that very same technique when it's needed. But if we were to move away from consent agenda and use this format every single meeting, we are going back in time to the dark ages and we are, this is not pleasant. I mean, the onus is on us to come prepared to debate things. You have a week and you need to find the time to read the reports, talk to staff and talk to your constituents ahead of time. I go out of my way to do that and I get not all of you or me, or, or, you know, like doing computer stuff and talking to people on Facebook and whatever. But that's my MO and it works for me and this has been working all last term. And I think it would be doing everyone a disservice to try and go back to the old ways. You know, where it's a meeting like this.
I wasn't trying to go back to the old ways, I just would like to clarify that.
One second, we got to let some other people talk, but I'm just, the issue with considering and revisiting this consent format is that this works really well at higher levels of government, the stakes are far higher. And if we can't pull it off, there's something wrong with this. One of the options we could have, and that's to split up our committee of the whole and our council meetings into two meetings like we used to do. So we would have two separate meetings, but every time we meet, it costs staff, we're burning cash. Again, we're trying to find ways to save money. We can't say that in one breath and then start changing the cadence of our meetings and have all of our high price helps sitting here answering questions that should easily be answered offline. And then also start telling people how, you know, it's basically performance politics then that we want to save money. So I think that our, our consent agenda format works well. We're emulating something that works well at a higher tier with way bigger reports and way bigger budgets and way bigger impact on five hundred thousand people in Simcoe County. And we're pulling it off for eighteen thousand here. And our schedule, July and August, if there was things to meet this July, and believe me, I had the conversations with the clerk, I'm not calling a meeting to have one or two things on the agenda and have all staff time involved in calling a meeting. So the decision was made, nothing of urgency was there. It's holiday season, a lot of people are off on holiday and vacation, so you'd have gaps in who's going to attend anyway. July and August at the call of chair is again, something I think works. If council has specific issues that you have with parts of the procedure policy that you'd like to suggest we change, then I think something as vague as the council review the consent agenda format, you know, is, is too wide open. We need to get nitpicky, if there's something you really don't like about it, let's bring a motion forward about a specific change and let's debate the merits of it. But again, I caution council, we shouldn't just be opening up our procedure policy every time we don't like the way something works. People have been using this policy successfully all over the province and then the upper tiers. And again, the onus is on you to read your reports, get your background information and come prepared to date, debate the matters now. And deferrals and things like that, because you haven't got time to do it, or it's too complex, or there's too many, should be the, the exception and not the rule. So those are my, my thoughts on this. I don't support this motion because I don't think we're, we need to mess with our consent agenda. I think it works well and tonight that this is the absence of consent agenda is what we're living through right now. And we already have the ability to meet in July and August, so we don't need to change anything. We just had nothing of value to talk about in July and August, and so we didn't meet. So those are, that's my input on this. I understand where you're coming from, but I disagree wholeheartedly. And Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, you touched on holidays, which was my concern with that is July and August. I feel like there's a lot of holidays so that I don't see there being a huge amount in there. I mean, I had it on my calendar to attend in July and August. So I, I think if we have that opportunity to be able to call back and be able to do it if necessary, that's great. I also, I guess, for sorry, it's been long. Having staff here, I agree, is not ideal to continue on and having, going back to every, every two weeks. I think we are living proof this month that we have had that and the meetings have not been shorter. So I don't, there's, think there's any way to actually think that that's going to make a difference. I, it just all depends on timing of when things are put together and some meetings may be way longer. So I'm, I'm not sure if going back to every two weeks would be beneficial, but I'm open to, to thinking about it.
Counselor McDonald, you had some more input?
I'll just, if I can, Madam Clerk, just withdraw the notice of motion. Or just vote it down. We had our debate here already, so.
It's on the floor, we have to call the question. If you, I've done this too sometimes, tabled stuff that, you know, I decide, well, the heck with it now, I'm done with it. Just vote it down, just procedurally, we have to go through that process. Any other questions, Counselor Meredith? Or is that just your hand resting?
Yeah, I just had a comment on, you know, when, when, when we, Catherine McDonald did a, you know, clawed back the one agenda, I, item and myself, I can't even talk right now. And I did the same, I, I imagine she did her homework and I did my homework, I read the whole agenda. I had the questions, I thought it was, I'm confused here, that I thought the questions that staff gets, we have to you know, ask the same questions, they have the answers, so the public can see and, and know what we're talking about. But if that's not the case, and we can just whip, whip right through it, so I'm getting mixed, mixed messages here. Do we not do that or, or do we? There are questions that are answered to us in, in advance. Some were, you know, maybe sixty percent were, forty percent weren't. So I did my homework, I didn't get all the answers I, I wanted, I should have gotten, so. So I, we did our homework and here we are at ten, ten thirty, ten forty or whatever. So do we not ask those questions if we're comfortable with them? So the, the, the public cannot, you know, see what we're debating about or hear what we're debating about?
So that's really up to each counselor to decide. If the question, if you feel the question you asked in the background when you're doing your prep work for the meeting satisfies you and you don't need to pull it, fair enough. You don't have to pull it if you just want to make a comment, right? That's what the comment section is at the beginning of consent agenda. If you doesn't want to throw something out there, and you can always vote down a specific item if it is pulled, but it's entirely up to you. So you, you're doing the right thing, you're asking the questions, staff is trying to get back to you with their answers. They may not give you the answer you want, they may not get back to you in time. I mean, I know they'll try, but there's a litany of questions and these are big reports with big, you know, material changes to our community. So there's nothing wrong with doing what you're doing. I'm just saying that if tonight was a kind of the oddball, where almost everything from the consent agenda, which was significant, was pulled. And it's a perfect example of what every meeting would look like if we disposed of the consent agenda format. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I'm not in favor of that.
Nothing wrong in asking the questions, makes perfect sense. And sometimes it's important that the public sees and hears you asking those questions of staff. That's their job and it's your job. So never feel like you can't do that. I'm just suggesting that if something was pulled, so you can ask a question and it was a for information only report that has, you know, it was for information only, that could probably be dealt with through a Q and A session just before we pass the consent agenda, rather than pulling out the report, keeping the staff here and, you know, going through all the machinations. So it's a bit of a learning lesson and tonight was a extra heavy lifting agenda item. So you didn't do anything wrong, that's the bottom line, Counselor Meredith, but the, the responsibility and the option rests with you. It's your privilege to pull anything off this agenda and hash it out.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much, your worship. I just wanted a few comments. There was a time within the old system was we used to work with hours and hours of meetings and committees to refine that down to be more effective and efficient. This is what the procedural bylaw came into place. I remember sitting on four or five committees chairing those. It was a lot of work and time, but you got to realize that at council meetings, you didn't get your agenda on a Friday night. Come Monday, you got counsel. So you can imagine the situation that you had to deal with to deal with this. I think the consent agenda or even the procedural bylaw has its effectiveness, has its benefits, but there's, there's also drawbacks. I think that what I'm hearing is there, there's, there seems to be a lack of communication. And I think it's just realizing that you, you may not get enough as a counselor to absorb the information. Staff is there, but you, we have to ensure that we're prepared for coming to meetings, whether it's a consent agenda or whatever the meeting is. It's a process and it, it doesn't happen overnight. As new counselors, it's a deep, deep learning of policies, understanding the rules and regulations, how to engage in, in politics. It's up to the individual to ask those questions to stop and be prepared and come to council. And sometimes that's difficult, I understand that, but that's, that's what you signed up for. So I think the realization is that we got to find a way to, to work with staff. So we're open communication, so we're more prepared. And I think it's more getting an orientation to understand, you know, these, these processes. And I can say that there, there is an improvement that I've seen coming back as Deputy Mayor. Uh, but there's also other areas that we need to look at. And that's working with the CAO to find a solution to work with staff, because she's the one that will help, help us. I think the fact that, you know, if we're going to go back to the old way, be prepared for long hours and a lot of reading oriented, but, you know, committees were just in abundance. There is a planning committee, we have a special, once a month, planning committee. That's no longer the, uh, exists. We have to rely on the staff in terms of what they're preparing. And that's something you got to have in trust, their expertise. And I think that's the fact that we need to, to come to, in, in how we operate as counselors and make decisions. But it's okay, you ask questions because you don't know everything yourself and that's why staff is there to, to assist with that. So anyway, that's just my comment.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to point out that since your term of council has started, we have had thirty meetings in total, including regular and special council. So we have, you guys have been very busy, even with meetings every third week.
And it is a learning curve, counsel. This is, for a lot of you, this is your first term. I remember my first term and it was drinking from a fire hose, which is why I spend a bit more time talking about procedures and walking you guys through things. Probably by, you know, sometime middle of next year, I'll wean back on that, because you'll, I'll expect you guys to, to get it all by then. So hopefully you appreciate the fact that I'm trying to share the things that I learned, sometimes the hard way with you, so that we can all work together more effectively. Still doesn't mean we're all going to align on everything, but at least we get the whole procedure down and how it works. So. All right, call in the question. All those in favor of, do I need to review this again, or we all know what we're doing here? Council, review the consent agenda format and the council meeting schedule include meetings in July and August, all those in favor? And those opposed? And those opposed? And that is defeated. No, it's good. I mean, that's why we have conversations. Not every motion results in direction. It's the conversation in the council. I was accused of doing a lot of that last term. I loved having the conversations. Next, I've got a couple of, uh, notice, or motions for which notice was given, so I'm going to yield the chair to the Deputy Mayor because I can't do both.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I have two, two motions here.
Yep.
Uh, thank you very much. I've got two motions here. Uh, the first one is moved by Mayor Gordon, second by, uh, Councillor Ball. And that staff prepare a response policy framework and return to council with a draft plan that addresses the collection, documentation, interdepartmental, mental triage, response, and follow-up activities for community safety, complaints that relate to property standards and other related bylaws, building code, safety fire, safety that may impact safe occupancy of the subject property as well as the lawful enjoyment of neighboring property owners and municipal land assets, infrastructure. You've heard the motion. Are there any questions or comments or?
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about why the motion exists. Just, just again, normally if it's your motion.
Mayor Gordon.
Pass the mic over to you to talk to council why it exists. So I know this one's a little wordy, but I want it to be very prescriptive and exactly what I'm asking council to endorse. And also so it's very clear that what we're asking staff to do if, if this is passed tonight. This motion stems from the Zoom meeting that I hosted, uh, that was quite well attended online for residents that are deeply concerned about the flop houses, trap houses, crack houses, whatever you want to call them in the neighborhoods. And we have a few in our community, just as every community does. And the resounding, you know, conversations we had, listening to their problems showed that there was a gap in, in formalized response. Everything was really being shoveled to police. And the infrequent use of our interdepartmental teams such as I've listed here, by law and fire for fire safety inspections and our building official for, you know, things that were unmodified, uh, rooming houses that were turned into rooming houses without building permit, no, there's no smoke detectors. A lot of these flop houses are, you know, not in great shape and some of them probably aren't deserving of occupancy permits, mold and all kinds of stuff. So what, what I, what we put together was a multidisciplinary framework in theory that now needs to be formalized. And that would see complaints coming into the town through some mechanism that staff will figure out, whether it be phone call, email, you know, what have you, people walking into the counter about homes that they believe, and it doesn't have to be a home, it could be commercial property, that they believe is either unsafe being used as a drug house or is, uh, you know, the subject of all kinds of noise and mess and, you know, junky, uh, couches out on the front lawn and the place is just dragging down the property values and there's comings and goings of hoodie people in backpacks and crack inject, you know, injections, uh, syringes all over the ground. Sorry, I'm getting tired too. This stuff's happening in our community. We all know this is nothing new to you. But what I'm proposing is that we, we formalize or ask staff to put together a response framework. So it's really clear that when these things come in, that they get triaged and almost like a situation table for these troublesome homes. And they can decide, okay, well, this, let's go send fire over. They have certain inspection abilities and powers that aren't available to the building guys or the bylaw and vice versa. So let's have a multidisciplinary team approach to dealing with these homes. And ultimately with the landlords, the owners of the homes, because they're the ones that get the enforcement orders of the fines, not the tenants. So we're not targeting, uh, people with addictions. We're not targeting people that are poor. We're not targeting the people that have to live in these, you know, some of these decrepit homes. But we are dealing with the people that own them and holding them accountable for what's going on in the neighborhood because of the way they choose to keep the home and how they manage or don't manage their tenants. We saw this on the Queen Street property and quite successfully after a sort of a multidisciplinary lobby. Matter of fact, it was the, the day of the, uh, the meeting, the boards and shutters and plywood went up on that house. The, the people were evicted finally and, uh, even though they were breaking back in, they were, it was shuttered and that neighborhood is now a little more calm. Unfortunately, some of the people that lived in that home have now just been displaced and they're now in another place nearby and causing the same kind of problems. But this was, this, uh, recommendation that I'm asking, uh, staff to, to formalize is something that all of those department members uh, on the call, and you can watch this to see it yourself, agreed they could do. They kind of do it right now, but it's not formalized. So I'm asking that we formalize this multidisciplinary response to try and, uh, do something more than we are doing. And it will involve the police, our bylaw, our building officials and the fire inspection. And it's kind of a novel approach. It hasn't really been tried before and I'd like us to try it. So staff, any direction? To put together what that response policy framework looks like, how they can do it lawfully and, uh, you know, protect our interests as well as the neighbors. And most importantly, make this response framework so that it's equally applicable to any of our homes in town. Because this can't be seen as being targeting a certain demographic. So that's, uh, in staff's hands. I'm not going to presume tell them how to make this happen. I just believe that it can happen. The stakeholders have agreed. All of these departmental heads have agreed that it can happen. They just need council direction to get the ball rolling and that's what I'm seeking tonight. So there's my long preamble about, uh, what this motion's all about.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I have councillor Ball, yeah?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to clarify that these homes aren't just with tenants. There's a lot of people that own their homes that the owner is the issue. So I just want to clarify that. Uh, I think that this is a beyond necessary, uh, initiative. I know a lot of people that I get complaints from residents complaining about houses that have, you know, criminal activity or have, uh, property standards that are way below what our bylaws, uh, have. Now, they don't actually have the bylaw ability to go forward and there's not enough staff to be able to go to all of these things. So all of these houses that are getting complaints about them and I, I know people in our community that have actually moved out of Midland because they are living beside some of these houses. So that's a huge problem that we need to look at. And I think that bylaw, it has to have the ability, has to have, are almost like a wraparound service for being able to deal with this. So I think this is something that I would support. I think it's necessary at this point.
Thank you. Councillor East?
Yeah, I, I fully support this as well and I, I commend, uh, Bill Gordon and, and everybody that was invested time into this and bringing the community together to speak on behalf of it. So I would fully support it. Um, I would also extend it to, uh, possibly looking at hotels as well. And, and, you know, going back to that conversation about landlords, to me, there's no difference between, uh, a landlord and a hotel owner. So, a- and hotels tend to house a lot of this trouble as well. So I think that it shouldn't be just limited to, you know, junky houses or crack houses. We should also be looking and targeting a lot of the, uh, local hotels that are essentially housing this problem as well. But you have my full support, my friend.
Thank you, Councillor East. I believe I have, uh, councillor Downer. Councillor Downer, you have it for?
Thank you. I too support, uh, your initiative, Your Worship, but this is not, this is not a new problem. We've been dealing with this problem in Midland for as long as I've been on council. There are legalities. And this problem has gotten so far ahead of us, it's going to be an enormous task to, to put it, to check it and put it in its place because it's been going on for so long. And like by law, I can't cover it all. And I know, I know the houses, I know where they are. I've got a few, a few of them in mind right now that have been the same for fifteen years or better. Nothing's been done about it. And I don't know how you're going to do it. Uh, work through all the legalities, but, uh, I'll certainly give you my support any way I can.
Thank you, councillor Downer for that. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Meredith, sorry. I always look for the yellow hand. Uh, yeah, councillor Meredith, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to comment on, um, um, I get where you're, where you're going with this and, and it's a great, it's a great initiative for sure. Um, just when it comes to landlords, um, you know, there's, there's some slum lords out there that just don't, don't care. There's other landlords out there that, you know, sometimes they just rent to the wrong person and then now try to get them out of the house. That, that's an issue and it's not the landlord's fault because he made a bad mistake. Um, and he's going to pay for it because the house is damaged. And now you have that situation. Now you have a bylaw, uh, um, you know, situation coming at him with more expense, but I mean, as long as bylaw has, you know, they can see the good in, in that particular case. They can work with them instead of, you know, against them. So that's the only concern I have when it comes to, uh, that type of, uh, property standards.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments, questions regarding this? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Your Worship, go ahead.
Yeah, just in, in defense of, uh, what you're saying, councillor Meredith, you're banging on, uh, the Queen Street, uh, home, for example, that is, you know, made a lot of news and notoriety. While I was there that day talking with CTV about, you know, all this stuff going on, the landlord who engaged the, uh, contractors who are at site literally cutting plywood and fixing it to the doors and windows, he called the guy and I spoke to him on the phone for fifteen minutes. I got to talk to the landlord and I listened to the, the concerns he had. The almost year-long battle waiting to get through the process to speak to the landlord tribunal to evict these folks who hadn't been paying rent in like a year. And, uh, so this guy was not the enemy, right? And I always, I made that very clear to him that the things that I was suggesting and we were talking about that were now, you know, formalized in this motion are not meant to be going after people who are, are doing their level best. And, uh, you know, to his credit, uh, all the garbage that was out on the front got taken to the dump finally. The day that I was there, more garbage was out front. I mean, old furniture and stuff. And so while I was talking to him, I suggested that, uh, he could call, and I'll give a little plug to Busy Bee because they have a little service where they not only taxi, but they have a little trailer service. And, uh, so he called Busy Bee and like in twenty minutes later, the, the junk was gone off the front line and, and heading to the dump. So, you know, I, I had a conversation with this, this landlord that, you know, clearly the neighbors weren't impressed with and listened to the problems that he'd had. And so he's not the kind of person that we, we would, you know, unleash all the hounds on, but we would have that conversation. And while we had the opportunity, we'd make sure that that home was still safe and, and properly, you know, uh, habitable. That the smoke detectors were in place and working, uh, that there weren't, you know, when we're in there, a bunch of retaining walls or structural changes to the building that we weren't aware of because we can check the database for the building permits. And, uh, you know, fire could get in there and the police definitely had control at a place because they did a couple of search warrants on it. So that's where this concept of a multidisciplinary approach, kind of like the situation table is for people with mental health crisis, where the input comes in from the community or us or staff or anybody. They look at this property, they look at the circumstances, they reach, get out of the hold of the owner. Tell them about, you know, how they're issuing, you know, having problems with the different standards and bylaws or concerns. And if the owner is willing to work with them, then I'm sure our staff would be, well, very, you know, well received. But the key is this will all be documented. We don't have a good process right now that collects the complaint, who we talked to, what their cell phone number is, what they committed to do when we go back and confirm, yes, they did in fact do this. And if it does need fire and it does need OPP and it does need building, but it doesn't need bylaw right now, all that will be captured in whatever this new framework is that our staff or, you know, they'll figure it out on their own. I don't want to presume to tell them how to do it all. And, uh, there'll be a way to report on this and we'll be able to have some measurable metrics at the end going, you know what? This process either was a colossal failure and a waste of time and money because don't think this doesn't cost money, right? We're burning staff hours. Uh, or it, you know, resulted in, uh, you know, positive outcomes on four of the nine complaints they dealt with this year. We won't know until we try. And so that's the thing, I'm, I'm not offering this as, uh, the solution because if it was that simple, someone else smarter than me would have come up with it. But it's something new to try and, uh, I just, I feel glad that council's supporting this and, and I, I look forward to what, uh, staff wrapped up as a draft policy response framework and for us to review it and feel really good about it and then, you know, manage the public, the PR campaign that goes with this. This is about carrot and stick, right? We're starting carrot. But we want to make sure we got stick in our back pocket. So thanks for the opportunity to discuss this with you and, uh, you know, see how the book goes.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, regarding that, if there are no further questions, comments, I want to take a vote on this. Those in favor? Those opposed? Seeing then that's carried. I do, I do have another motion here moved by Mayor Gordon, second by councillor Pross. That in the spirit of the truth and reconciliation reports called to action and the intentional impediments to traditional harvesting and cultural access to Georgian Bay impose a cost recovery initiative by the Town of Midland. Council agrees to waive boat launch fees for any residents of the Town of Midland who possess a valid Government of Canada Indigenous status or Métis Nation of Ontario citizenship document and that this policy go into effect January the first, twenty twenty-four. I'll have Mayor Gordon maybe speak to this, uh, in, in terms of the.
Thank you. I try to make the wording as clear and concise as possible. I'm not, I think, you know, unless you ask me, you know, why am I doing this? The question I want to answer council is because normally I would raise my eyebrow at you for bringing something that has budgetary impact to council before the budget. The reason why this is here now is because Truth and Reconciliation Day is upon us. And on the thirtieth of September, um, I would like to know, or at least have tried, to implement something meaningful uh, as a, as a municipal response to the many calls for action that are available to municipalities. The simplest one that costs us nothing is to educate ourselves and participate in ceremonies and learn more about the culture. Which, you know, Karen Mealing and her work through the many different arts and cultural, uh, departments that we have stood up. I think we do that now and most of us avail ourselves of it as we can. What I'm suggesting right now is something that came to my attention in talking with, um, several indigenous people from both Métis and First Nations. That the, uh, you know, the cost recovery thing that we had to do or we chose to do for the boat launch imposed an unintentional barrier to their traditional access. We only have the one boat launch. So what is the financial cost to us? How many people have a valid, um, status card? With them, you know, an address that shows living in Midland as opposed to, you know, on, on, uh, chimnecing? Or how many, because the Métis Nation has just gone through a culling, if you will, where they've de-citizenshiped a whole bunch of people who couldn't prove lineage, even though they've been representing and feel Métis. So there's, there's been, and that part of that is, you know, for their, their self-governance, they're going for federally. So I think there's an easy way, uh, for staff to implement this. I don't know, I couldn't tell you what the financial impact, the loss, if you will, of this hundred dollars we would normally get is going to cost us. But I would argue that when it comes to truth and reconciliation calls to action, we shouldn't be asking what it costs us. So I'm not trying to make anybody have settler guilt or anything like that. I'm just saying that there are few mechanisms we as a municipality can do that are truly, I think, meaningful. And this is something in talking with the, our residents in Midland who are either Métis or, uh, First Nation feel that would be an olive branch and a, and a truly nice gesture to do. It does have financial impact to us. I don't know what it's going to be, but that's not really the point in this particular case. So that's why I brought this forward and that's why the timing is now rather than me waiting for the normal budgetary impact. And that's why I'm suggesting that it doesn't kick in until January first. Because quite frankly, in our final, um, you know, review of our budget, this unknown number could be a bridge too far for someone and technically we could reverse it. I think it would be a really horrible thing for us to do, but I, I wanted to give council that option. I'm not painting you in the corner, but I'd like us to approve this and to be able to announce this first September thirtieth, Truth and Reconciliation Day. There's my pitch.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I have, uh, councillor Meredith, Mayor, councillor, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate we're at this stage right now and, and the budget, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at a steep budget and we're, we're talking about the corporation of the Town of Midland. What's the best for the Town of Midland, treating it as a business, taking the emotion out? Simple answer is, we can't be giving anything up for free anymore. We're coming to the budget and and we have to find money and now we're, you know, we have to find savings. And if it's a business decision and you said this is a business and we have to find revenue somewhere. So I'm taking the motion out of this. And again, I'd love to approve it and this will probably be a common theme with me coming in January 2023. But I can't support this at this time.
Thank you, councillor. I have councillor Downer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I too can't support it. You know, for years and years, we we let the residents of Midland use this ramp and park for free. We made a pitch that we're putting a hundred dollar fee on the boat ramp to do improvements to the area. It was a hard pill to swallow. I went out and paid my hundred dollars like everybody else. And I think, you know, if you use the ramp, you should, you should pay a hundred bucks. So I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Downer. Any other, just councillor Ball?
Thank you. I was just trying to find, there was, it's some, in one report, there was a our actual usership of the boat launch went down with the paid parking passes by a huge amount. Actually, it was like 700 passes when it was freed down to 300. And those are not specific numbers because I can't find it. And it was like a paid, who knows, I know, or that they're shaking their head yes at me. So I think that we really didn't make a profit off of this anyways. That's not the the point even still. They, I believe that we should be giving the passes out for free to those who have the right to the water to begin with. So I would support this and I think that financially, the boat launch pass really didn't give us that much money anyways.
Thank you, councillor Paul. I have a councillor East.
As much as I understand Jim and and Bill, I appreciate your what you're saying, but at the same time, I have made many indigenous friends that have counted on fishing their entire life. And it's actually a part of their history. Stripping them away of that and make forcing them to pay to use their original land to fish is wrong. So I would fully support this motion and I believe that it puts the power in their history back and gives them the ability to fish as they want and feed their families. This is a big part of their history, right? So and I have many indigenous friends that I expect and I hear that they weren't impressed when this happened. So I I fully support this motion.
Are there any other comments, questions from councillors? I'll, I'll say a few words just in terms of truth and reconciliation. We have to realize that Midland's population is a high percentage of indigenous people, whether it's Métis or Stavis Indians from the First Nations in the area. We have transient First Nation people that have come into Midland and they call home now. Historically, the rights to to the land and to the water came through the British government and Royal Proclamation of 1763, which gave the indigenous rights to hunt and fish. Unfortunately, 1923, it was the First Nations that lost that, the local First Nations. It wasn't till last year that they got their fishing rights back and the way of life. We have a huge Métis population, which is considered to be the homeland, which is defined by the Métis Nation of Ontario. So I think we have, we, there is a an onus on council to look at this as a, as a, as a good neighbor gesture, but also as a partner with community. So we have a diverse community mixture that's growing, but we need to look at inclusion for everybody. So I I think this is a worthwhile approach to look at and move forward. I believe that the truth and reconciliation and also with the 54 calls to action. It's a, it's based on the health of a community. And indigenous people respect the land because they also respect the water and the protection of that. It's just the way of life. So I support, I support this motion just in the terms that it's a a very beneficial act on the Town of Midland to to do this. And that's, just wanted to say a few words on that. So anyway.
Thanks. And just before the vote gets called, and I would request a recorded vote on this, I'd like to read recommendation or called action number 74 that inspired this motion tonight. And that is, we call upon the federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal governments to repudiate concepts used to justify European sovereignty over indigenous peoples and lands, such as the doctrine of discovery and Tyrrannolius, and to reform those laws, government policies, and litigation strategies that continue to rely on such concepts.
Thank you, your worship. Are there any further questions? Comments? No. I will call the vote. Yeah, councillor Meredith, sorry, I missed you there. I finally saw the yellow hand.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Just a comment to Jamie Lee's comment about the boat launch and the the revenues that are projected were were far off. The one thing when, when that got passed, I I thought that we were going to have full attendance there monitoring the the boat launch. So that was a big fail. When I launched my boat, there were three other boats that didn't pay. I thought we were doing something like the model like Penetang. And if we don't do that in our next budget, you know, I'm sure it's going to come in as a probably a service level request, but we really have to look at that because that that was very disappointing. Those numbers were disappointing. So anyways, we'll see what happens at budget and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Seeing there's no more questions, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
You asked for a recorded vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a recorded vote. Sorry about that, Madam Clerk. I missed that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Members of council, you've heard the motion. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Councillor McDonald. Councillor Ball?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Conton?
Yes.
Councillor East?
Yes.
Councillor Downer?
No.
Councillor Post?
Yes.
Councillor Bald?
Yes.
Councillor Meredith?
No.
And Mayor Gordon?
Yes.
The motion is carried seven to two.
All right. Thank you very much, council. I have, we're on the home stretch here, literally. Moved by councillor or Deputy Mayor Conton, seconded by councillor East, the bylaw 2023-53, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held September 27, 2023, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Next move by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Meredith, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 11:10 PM. All those in favor? That is carried. We stand adjourned. Thank you, council.